...of some of the proposed zoning changes by city staff. We've got then about eighty folks so far signed up to give public comments, so we'll give everybody their chance to come to one of the two microphones. If you do have difficulty navigating the stairs, just wave your hand when I call your name, and we do have one roving wireless microphone that we can bring to you if you have difficulty navigating the stairs when we get to it. We have to always start these meetings by reading the official title of the council bill into the record, so at this point I'll ask Spencer Williams of my office to please read the abbreviated title into the record.
We have Council Bill 119184, an ordinance relating to mandatory housing affordability, rezoning certain land and modifying development standards throughout the city, implementing MHA requirements and modifying existing development standards to improve livability.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, we're going to start with a brief overview of the proposed zoning changes in Districts Three and District Seven, and we've got Sarah Maxana here from the city's Planning and Community Development Office to give us a quick PowerPoint presentation, and then we'll move on to the public hearing element. Sarah, take it away.
Okay.
And welcome, Councilmember Swan.
So the mandatory housing affordability program is being implemented in all commercial and multifamily areas throughout the city, and it's a program to ensure that as Seattle grows, we have affordable housing coming with that growth. Right now, we have voluntary programs in place, and MHA will be a new mandatory mechanism that ensures that whenever there is multifamily or commercial development happening in the city moving forward, that with it comes a contribution to affordable housing. In order to put this program in place, we have to enact zoning changes so that the new development will create that income and rent restricted housing, and MHA lays that framework. The goal of MHA, the ten-year goal of MHA, is to create 6,000 units of housing that is income and rent restricted and affordable to households at about sixty percent of the area median income. That's about seven, excuse me, fifty-seven thousand for a family of four, or a little over forty thousand for a family of one. There are two ways that development moving forward can comply with MHA. One is through performance. The performance option means that the development will include new income and rent restricted housing as part of the project. The second is through payment, where the development contributes a per-square-footage-dollar amount to contribute to an affordable housing fund that the city uses with other local, state, and federal funds to create affordable housing throughout the city. MHA uses a state-sanctioned mechanism in the Growth Management Act whereby we exchange new affordability requirements for an increase in value through a zoning change. Essentially, without MHA, you might have a five-story building here, six-story building here, that would be market-rate housing under the current existing zoning and no affordability requirement. With MHA, we grant the developer the option of developing something a little bit higher, and whether they use that option or not, they have to comply with MHA. They have to provide either the housing on-site or a contribution, a dollar amount per square footage. So you get the additional development capacity, and with that comes affordable housing contribution through payment or performance. This mechanism, inclusionary zoning, is used by other cities throughout the state. We do not have it here, did not have it here until last year when City Council took action to put the affordability requirements in place and the necessary rezones in several neighborhoods throughout the city, including downtown, South Lake Union, uptown, portions of the central area, and Chinatown ID, and the U District, excuse me. This proposal that's in front of council now includes rezone proposals for the remaining multifamily and commercial areas throughout the city. So this includes all of the urban villages and all of the areas outside of urban villages that are zoned currently for multifamily or commercial zoning today. This proposal came out of over two years of community engagement. Community engagement was really used for two primary purposes. One was to make sure that people knew about the proposal, they knew where they could learn more, they knew where they could get more information, and two, to shape the proposal. Fundamental question was whether or not to put rezones in place with a peanut butter approach, with the same amount everywhere, or whether or not there were specific characteristics within neighborhoods or across neighborhoods that should be considered when the rezone proposal was developed. There was a deliberate effort, per direction from City Council, to engage underrepresented communities, particularly communities of color, communities where language might be a barrier, renters, for example. And so we used a lot of in-person talks, going to where communities already meet, and making sure that we were translating our materials into other languages. The engagement shaped the proposal in several ways. These were some of the common themes that we heard throughout engagement. One, agreement that there should be more housing for people at income, at all income levels, from transitional out of homelessness to middle-income housing. Also, a tremendous amount of concern about minimizing displacement of current residents, so current residents who are being forced out of the city because of increase in rents, increase in housing costs. Also, a desire to see more housing choices, particularly homeownership and family-sized units throughout the city, wanting to see more opportunities for people to live near parks, schools, and transportation. And then ways to strengthen urban design and sense of place in urban villages and promote environmental sustainability, including supporting transit use and having space for trees. So speaking specifically to the proposal in Districts Three and Seven, I'm going to focus on the urban villages, and the urban villages are communities that were defined in the 1994 Comprehensive Plan for the City of Seattle as places that would be the focal points for future growth as well as investments. And in Districts Three and Seven, there are a total of five urban villages that I'll provide a quick overview. The principles that came out of the, that came out of the community engagement guided many of these recommendations for each of these urban villages, and I'll be highlighting the primary principle as we go along. First and foremost, though, at the high level, the proposal does propose comprehensive MHA rezones and new affordability requirements in all of these urban villages, so all of these communities that have been identified for the last twenty-five years as places to focus growth, as well as all areas outside of urban villages that are already zoned for multifamily or commercial zoning today. One of the ways that we used community engagement to shape the proposal, again, to move away from that peanut butter approach of using a cookie-cutter approach for every urban village or for every parcel throughout the city, was to vary the scale of proposed zoning changes based on displacement risk and based on access to opportunity. Displacement risk and access to opportunity were two indices that were created in the latest iteration of our city's comprehensive plan, the Seattle 2035 Comprehensive Plan that was adopted in 2016. And those indices look at a couple different things. The access-to-opportunity index looks at physical characteristics in the neighborhood, such as proximity to transit, or parks, or quality of schools, and those are considered. Having good access to those types of amenities or infrastructure is correlated with successful being able to thrive in that community. Displacement risk index, on the other hand, as opposed to the physical characteristics, looks more at the social characteristics and the demographic characteristics of the community, and looks at the relative risk of community members to be at risk of displacement as communities change and grow, particularly as housing costs increase. And using this as a matrix with displacement risk and access to opportunity, are able to categorize neighborhoods in the city according to these two indices, and able to propose zoning recommendations that are different based on displacement risk and access to opportunity. So in particular, we'll go through each of the urban villages. In District Three, urban villages have a high risk of displacement. That's the urban villages of North Rainier, First Hill Capitol Hill, Twenty-third, and Union Jackson, and all have high access to opportunity, so that includes North Rainier, First Hill Capitol Hill, Twenty-third, Union through Jackson, and Madison Miller. So for Twenty-third and Union through Jackson, the primary principle here was that because this is a community at high risk of displacement, we propose M increases, and M is a way of indicating the minimum necessary to put the program in place. We have M, M1, and M2, and you can think of those as increments in value of the amount of rezone that's being conveyed through this proposal. So in communities at high risk of displacement, such as Twenty-third and Union through Jackson, primary principle is to propose M-level increases throughout the urban village except in the immediate vicinity of frequent transit, so in this case, that would be the future light rail station down by Judkins, in Judkins Park. As well, another primary principle is to expand the urban village to include the full ten-minute walk shed close to those frequent transit nodes. So in this case, there's an urban village expansion being proposed on the southern end of the urban village to include that light rail, that future light rail station walking area. Other notes about Twenty-third and Union through Jackson and the zoning proposal, the rezones for the nodes at Twenty-third and Union, Cherry and Jackson, were adopted in 2017 already. That was following focused four-year planning effort in those, those three nodes. All existing family, all existing single-family is proposed to go to residential small lot, that's an M-level change. And there's, I believe, two locations in the urban village that are planned for future affordable housing projects, one hundred percent affordable, and in those places supported a larger rezone to support those projects. First Hill Capitol Hill, similarly, it's a community that, on that matrix, again, is a community at high risk of displacement, and so therefore proposing M increases throughout the urban village, except near frequent transit. In the case of this urban village, the urban village already included the full ten-minute walk shed around those transit nodes, and so there's no expansion to this urban village being proposed. There's no single-family zoning in this urban village currently, and there are no changes being proposed to the institutional overlays. Proposed development standards in the First Hill area are to encourage slender towers, really with an acknowledgement that high, the high-rise zone that's in that, in First Hill, has not seen a lot of development yet, but anticipating that in this next ten years we might see towers and trying to create development standards that'll encourage taller slender towers. As well, the, the current proposal replaces the existing voluntary incentive zoning program with MHA. In Madison Miller, the primary principle is that this is a community with high access to opportunity and low risk of displacement on that matrix, and in these communities, we propose more M1 and M2 level changes. That's the higher, higher amount of value that's being conveyed with those zoning proposals in order to support transit and other community principles. There's zoning changes being proposed along Madison Avenue to support a mixed-use node at future BRT stations, so while that whole area along Madison Avenue is already zoned for mixed-use development, trying to focus a couple nodes of more intense development near the future BRT stations, and then encourage more housing choices, residential, between Madison Avenue and the Community Center and Park along Nineteenth. Finally, although most of this urban village is in District Two, the North Rainier Urban Village, the northern portion of it, is in District Three, the primary principles, again, in communities with high risk of displacement, were proposing M-level changes except near frequent transit. In this case, that would be the light rail station at Mount Baker, as well as the future light rail station up at Judkins Park, and propose expanding the urban village to include that full ten-minute walk shed to frequent transit. Existing single-family in the urban village is proposed to go to RSL. Another principle is to minimize increases in development capacity, so minimize more housing choices in immediate vicinity of highways and other major arterials, so within 500 feet of I-90, just did that M-level change only to put the program in place, but tried not to focus a lot of new, new housing right there on top of the freeway. And then also supporting the mixed-use nodes at the, the two future light rail stations. So moving over to District Seven, council has already adopted in 2017 rezones for all of the urban centers. These are the larger version of urban villages, including downtown, South Lake Union, and uptown in 2017. There's one remaining urban village, Upper Queen Anne, in District Seven, and that falls into the low-risk of displacement and high access to opportunity on that matrix. The primary principle in Upper Queen Anne, then, is that in communities with high access to opportunity and low risk of displacement, propose more of those larger-scale changes to support transit and other community principles. Because Upper Queen Anne did not meet the threshold for transit service, there is no proposed urban village expansion in Upper Queen Anne at this time. There's no single-family zoning in urban village, in the urban village currently, and then the note I just did out of order about the, the transit. And so finally, outside of urban villages, there is a good deal of multifamily and commercial zoning outside of these urban villages, particularly in District Seven, and MHA will, will apply, and rezones are being proposed for all of those areas. The rezones are all the M-level change, so if you imagine on many arterials through District Seven, you might have right now zoning that would allow for thirty feet, this rezone proposal would take that to forty feet, or forty feet today would go to fifty-five feet. And so that is the case for all multifamily and commercial areas outside of urban villages in both Districts Three and District Seven. How new capacity will look and feel? During our engagement, we tried a lot of different ways to give a sense of how, how the, how the areas might change and look over a twenty-year horizon through various visuals. This was from a virtual reality tool that we used at some of the open houses, and what you see is some single-family homes in the foreground on the left side, with some townhouses filling in in gold on the, on the left. That is showing single-family that's going to residential small lot, what the change could look like in twenty years. On the right side, you see Low Rise One going to Low Rise Two, and so in the distance, you see just some slightly taller, gold-colored buildings. We also heard a lot during community engagement about how new buildings look and feel, how they, how people experience them as they, as they change their neighborhoods. And so we did make many changes to the development standards. These are the definitions of how a building, the shape that the building has to take, the form, the size, the bulk. And we made many changes, including setbacks, including changes to landscape requirements in order to enhance livability, promote sustainability, and improve design. And so while that talk, presentation did get kind of into the weeds a little bit on zoning and development standards and such, pulling back up to the 10,000-foot level, what this program is really all about is putting this program in place. It's a mechanism that is approved at the state level that we don't have in Seattle today that will allow us to ensure that as development happens, as growth happens in Seattle, we're seeing more income and rent restricted housing. This program is expected to create 6,000 new income-rent restricted homes by 2025. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for that overview, Sarah, and I'd like to welcome, yes, please. I'd like to welcome Councilmembers Gonzalez, Musceta, and Bagshaw. Thank you all for being here. So we will now open up the public hearing on Council Bill 119184. We only have one microphone today, so I'll ask, in the interest of time, we've got about a hundred folks that have signed up to speak. If each of those hundred people uses their full two minutes, we'll be here until just before 10 o'clock tonight. So I'm going to ask us to really make sure that we go quickly through this, and one of the best ways we can do that is by shortening the time in between speakers. So if I call your name, if you wouldn't mind lining up behind the person who's getting ready to testify or who was already testifying, that will certainly make the process a lot easier. We also have a, a small box here in the front by the stairs for the number cards that you might have received upon signing up. And as I mentioned earlier, if you've got mobility challenges and have difficulty working stairs, when I call your name, just feel free to raise your hand, and we'll make sure to bring one of the roving microphones to you. We have two minutes on the clock for everybody this evening. However, there are some folks who have signed up to give testimony as part of a group. Groups are allowed for folks who, who represent five folks or more. We allow those groups to have five minutes. For us, there's a time value there, allowing for five people to speak for five minutes is obviously better for us than having five people speak for ten minutes. So without further ado, I'm going to start working our way through the list. Ellen, you were here first, 1A, Ellen Taft, 1B, Christina Sawicki, and then 2A, Elaine Noniman. Please.
Okay. My name is Ellen Taft. The City of Seattle should reject the proposal to upzone the Miller-Madison area in the name of increasing the supply of below-market housing because there is already a surplus of unoccupied, high-rent apartments. The Yessler Terrace redevelopment project shows that such a project benefits rich developers like billionaire Paul Allen's Vulcan Corporation instead of increasing the supply for Seattle's, the supply of housing for Seattle's urban poor and middle-income earners. The City of Seattle is investing $30 million in the Yessler Terrace redevelopment process. Previously, Yessler Terrace had 561 units for the very poor. These units will be replaced by the Seattle Housing Authority by a one-to-one replacement. There will be no increase in the number of units for the very poor. Developers who rent up to twenty percent of their units at below-market rates will get a complete tax exemption on the whole building. Upon the completion of Yessler Terrace, only 1,085 below-market units will be created, and 3,200 market-rate units will be created. In addition, on the 34 acres, the developers will build 1 million square feet of office space and 8,000 square feet of retail space subsidized by our tax dollars. Clearly, urban, the urban poor and middle-income earners are not the beneficiaries of the $30 million investment at Yessler Terrace.
Thank you, Ellen. Thank you. Christina?
And they won't be the beneficiaries of an upzone at Miller-Madison, they will be the victims!
Thank you, Ellen. Christina Sawicki? 1B? Oh, sorry. Thank you, Christina. I apologize.
Okay. Hi. I am a homeless college student that happens to attend this university. I'm a homeless veteran that lives in my car in this neighborhood, and I support any zoning changes that come to this neighborhood because there are many homeless college students that are trying to get our education here and make something of ourselves. But in addition, don't forget that when you are a full-time college student, that the low-income tax credit provides an exception for full-time college students, so we need to think outside the box and think about properties that will include our college students that are past or, you know, separate to these tax credits, so that our college students aren't sleeping here behind the school and are working, you know, in a home at night so that we can, you know, be productive. You know, I want to work someday, and in order for me to do that, I need to finish my education here at Seattle Central College. And I don't get support from the college, but I really don't get much support from the city either to help me get out of this situation, but please be mindful that a full-time college student is not going to get into low-income housing because of the tax credit put in the Reagan era that excludes us from low-income properties. Thank you very much, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Christina. Elaine Noniman, 2A. Catherine Holiday, 2B. Lisa Kuhn, 3A. And if, if you're Elaine, please line up over here. The closer that everybody gets to the microphone, the less time we have in between, the earlier everybody gets to go home to their.
I'm speaking for the Madison Miller Urban Village. We have been classified in the Preferred Alternative as a low-displacement and high-opportunity area. Low displacement, it is not. There are over 500, probably as many as 700, types of housing that we can identify that are between totally subsidized and transitional to low-income workforce. In terms of high opportunity, that's supposed to relate to being accessible to the light rail or other forms of mass transit. A good section of our urban village is nowhere near a 10-minute walk shed to either one of those services, either the Capitol Hill Light Rail or what is supposed to be coming years down the road of the Madison Miller, of the Madison Rapid Ride. The displacement, there's a lot of deception and there's a lot of misconception around what is being presented by my MHA, and also by those who are proponents of it, who really are not going to experience what the, the expectations are not going to be met. The other things to be considering are that people who are losing housing are attached to their neighborhoods, not just to the houses or the building itself, they have schools there, their children, they're close to their jobs, their kids are in daycare, their people have medical services and social services, and relatives and other reasons that are, that attach them, that bring value to them in the communities they live in. That is not at all considered in this planning. What the planning offers is a lot of units, a lot of high-density units for high-income people. The income wer, the, the amount of, of bulk housing that we are seeing now is right up to the sidewalks.
Thank you, Elaine.
It allows no open space.
Thank you. Catherine Holiday, 2B. Lisa Kuhn, 3A. Catherine?
Yes. The city and Mayor Murray broke trust with their constituents when they purposely dissolved the neighborhood councils and then put MHA Hala in motion. The city and Mayor Murray changed the main notification system from postal mailings to websites, so many constituents, particularly those most vulnerable to displacement, remain uninformed about the MHA plan even two years later. The city took insufficient neighborhood input and spent insufficient time on research, resulting in inappropriate or undefined setback in housing height definitions. It applied a one-size-fits-all analysis to all neighborhoods subject to upzone. MHA Hala's 7% rate for developer impact fees is too low and practically mandates the developer to pay the impact fee rather than sacrifice profit by including affordable housing within their development. This inevitably creates ghettos of displaced citizens and might qualify as disparate impacts under the Fair Housing Act. The city's new affordable housing will be created on a six-year or a longer timeline due to their stated goal of maximizing federal matching funds. Thus, constituents will be displaced right away, many already have been, without a new place to live for up to six years. And Elaine's point about the current residents not being considered is, is totally appropriate. The current residents are not at all considered, only the development is considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Lisa Kuhn, 3A. Guy Holiday, 3B. Alex Zimmerman, 4A. Lisa?
Okay, I'm Lisa Kuhn. Tech4Housing and the Sierra Club have sent out flyers which state the city's goal is to produce 50,000 new units in this city, of which 20,000 will be low-income housing units, and 30,000 would be market-rate units. The first number is misleading, the second is wrong. Those numbers were taken from a city-produced pie chart, which was created in 2016, which I could immediately tell was wrong the first time I saw it. The 20,000 number was a combination of a projected 6,000 MHA-produced low-income units and 14,000 units from other sources, including tax incentives and the housing levy we passed in 2016, which have nothing to do with MHA and upzoning, but it certainly has made for an intimidating visual. According to the MHA FEIS, which is what we are talking about tonight, the current MHA-created low-income units could be 5,753, which would include 1,055 units the city thinks it can force developers to include in market-rate developments, which is highly unlikely as things now stand. As for the 30,000 number, the city has known from the start how much the developer fees would be and what that would mean proportionally to the number of market-rate units that would need to be built to get the low-income units. As this would be, according to the FEIS, 69,520 net new units plus the one-to-one replacements for the demolished units and homes, the FEIS neglected to mention. The 30,000 number appears to be a glaring fabrication, and MHA fees would guarantee that market-rate units would not be affordable units. Once you understand the real numbers, you need to decide how to respond, but be advised, how you respond will tell the public the true nature of your character.
Thank you, Lisa.
I'll be in the hall with documentation.
Guy Holiday, you're going to be followed by Alex Zimmerman, and then Michaela Daffern's group.
My name is Guy Holiday. I'm also a part of the Madison Miller Park community. It's a diverse community economically. It has over 500 moderate, moderately-priced homes. And what I'd like to do is focus my attention on this, the most unifying factor in the Madison Miller Park community that's come up in this process, and that is the displacement issue. Because what Hala does is it creates unavoidable economic incentives for development to displace my 500 neighbors who are living in affordable homes and replace those units with market-rate homes and force those people to either live elsewhere in the city or outside the city. It's unacceptable to, to go through this process and end up in that circumstance. There's an easy solution, and that's for the city to commit itself to one-for-one replacement of affordable homes in the neighborhoods.
[speaking Spanish] Hi, my dear double-F Fuhrer, a Nazi social democratic mafia with progressive Gestapo principle. My name, Alex Zimmerman, I'm president of Stand Up America. Right now, I speak to you guys. A super- A super smart freaking Seattle idiot who brings Seattle number one fascist city in America. One-party system is always fascism. Is this crook, together with corporation, government, together with corporations, suck blood and money from us? A billion and billion dollars is a classic fascism. This, exactly what is we need change? We need clean this Dory chamber from this crook, a killer, and Amazon. Jebaz look to me like a Fuhrer number one. So what's happened? Collusion between Sound Transit, City Seattle, Amazon, Microsoft, and Boeing. We'll ask cost for another few years, approximately to $100 billion. We can build another Seattle for this money, but what is we need doing? Clean this crook, a criminal, a fascist, a killer. Hundred thousand people need help. Look what has happened right now. Nobody's stopping this, and this crook never one move Amazon out. And I talk about this for many years from Microsoft, only pure freaking idiot. Yeah, I never see people like this before, kept an open factory in downtown city. It's never happened before in human history. I live in Europe and many country. No, not freaking idiot, criminal idiot can do in this. They did this. Support this. Look what's happened. It's only beginning, guys. It's only beginning. So when you will acting like a freaking idiot, like a slave, with ship mentality, nothing will be changed. I give you my professional opinion. I live in this city for 30 years. And you need cleanse this, so Stand Up America, Stand Up Seattle, cleanse this Dory chamber from this killer.
Thank you, Alex.
Stand Up America.
So...
Mr. Chair, could you remind us, what is the protocol around impugning the motives of either anybody in the audience or anybody on stage? I think we're all here to listen to each other and want to do so in a way that cares each other.
Excellent reminder. Thank you, Councilmember Muscata. Now for something completely different. Michaela Daffern, your group is going to be followed by Brooke Broad, 5A, and then Jill Fleming, 5B.
Hi. My name's Alex Brennan. I'm the senior planner at Capitol Hill Housing. I was born and raised in Seattle and currently rent a room in a house on Capitol Hill.
And my name is Michaela Daffern, and I am the sustainability manager at Capitol Hill Housing. And I grew up in Tacoma, and I now rent my home in Capitol Hill as well.
Michaela and I have been participating in the public process about mandatory housing affordability, or MHA, for over two years now. I was a Capitol Hill representative on the Hall of Focus groups, and we both have been active in working with the city and in engaging our neighbors, coworkers, and other community members on this issue. This is taking too long. No ordinary person can stay engaged in a policy campaign for three years, which is what it looks like this is going to end up being. So many of the folks that we started out these conversations with are gone, some of them by choice, others forced to move as our affordable housing crisis has gotten worse. Others simply became exhausted and gave up on participating. Even as paid staff working on land use and housing policy, we have struggled to stay engaged.
At the same time, this process should have been more inclusive. Too many times, the city focused on responding to the loudest and most resourced opposition, primarily white, single-family homeowners, when the city should have been prioritizing dialogue with low-income communities and communities of color, communities that both need affordable housing and have historically been hurt by bad land use decisions. Attending the most recent open houses and hearings, we are disturbed by the lack of engagement from these communities at this point in the process. We still think that MHA is overall a good policy and that we should pass it. MHA will provide resources for 6,000 more affordable homes that we desperately need. It will allow more housing in general and the flexibility for more housing types. Within the limited scope of the existing urban villages, it explicitly responds to displacement risk and access to opportunity in determining the location of zoning changes, the first time Seattle has taken this approach.
On its own, MHA is not a solution for our affordability and homelessness crisis. We need to do much more. If we are to truly come together as a city and scale our solutions to meet the depths of our challenges, we must learn from what went right and what went wrong about the MHA community process. We look forward to the passage of this legislation and then to a critical debrief dialogue with the city and with other community members and organizations on both sides of the issue.
Thank you. Brooke? Brooke, you're going to be followed by Jill Fleming, 5B, and then AP Heard, 6A.
Hello. Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Brooke Broad, and I'm here to speak in favor of MHA and the proposed zoning changes. And I really want to challenge the council, if you're serious about displacement and mitigating it, to do more, go further, and upzone my neighborhood, my single-family neighborhood as well. To illustrate why we need to do this, I want to share the tale of two houses. This is a picture of 123, 125 Northeast 64th Street. This stacked duplex is a block away from Green Lake Elementary, three blocks away from Green Lake, and about a half a mile away from the Coming Light Rail Station, Roosevelt High School, and a vibrant neighborhood commercial hub. Unfortunately, this type of housing is currently illegal to build in this neighborhood on this block. Instead, we are getting, just a block away, 2354 Northeast 64th Street, in nearly 5,000-square-foot, three-story, five-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bathroom house that is filled, according to its brochure, with spacious, luxurious living. And this home will undoubtedly sell for more than $1 million. The residential small-lot zoning that is part of the new maps will help us build more homes like the first one: stacked apartments, duplexes, cottage-style housing, the missing middle we so desperately need. But the current vision for RSL doesn't go far enough, and the limitations on square footage and MHA fees may end up stifling this development. We also need to drastically increase the amount of land zone for RSL because as long as we continue to set aside nearly two-thirds of our land for luxury homebuilding and privileged single-family homeowners like myself, we will continue to displace communities of colors, teachers, nurses, bus drivers, baristas, and the artists who actually make this city vibrant and livable. So please pass MHA and then go further.
Thank you, Brooke. Jill?
Good evening. My name is Jill Fleming, and I am deputy director of Capitol Hill Housing. Capitol Hill Housing is a public development authority chartered by the city of Seattle. Our offices are on 12th Avenue. We own and manage over 1,000 affordable apartments in 34 buildings in District 3. We own or manage another 400 affordable apartments elsewhere in Seattle. These units are homes for seniors on fixed incomes. They are places for young families to set down roots. They are a foothold for families on the edge of homelessness. They lift people up. The need is great. Our vacancy rate is around 2%. That means that maybe 20 or 25 of our affordable apartments in District 3 become available during any year. When you look around District 3, you see many construction cranes, but they are not building affordable housing. We currently have one project under construction at 24th and Union, which will add 115 affordable units next February. We will break ground on another 110 affordable units next to the Capitol Hill Light Rail Station this summer. These two projects are a drop in the bucket compared to the construction that has and is occurring in District 3. We, as a city, need multiple tools to increase the supply of affordable housing in our high-opportunity neighborhoods near jobs and public transportation. The MHA program, combined with the upzones across the city, will provide additional affordable homes for families and individuals who need them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. AP, 6A, you're going to be followed by Laura's group, 6B, and then Chris Sanders, Group 7A.
Thank you, councilmembers. I'm AP Heard, and I've been an advocate for smart growth in Seattle for over 10 years in my teaching and research at UW, as well as my work as a small business member of the Seattle Chamber. I was on Mayor McGinn's two-year committee on affordable housing that was one in a long string of efforts to find a way that the private, public, and nonprofit sectors could work together to accommodate growth. We failed to find a solution, as many others had failed before us. Ed Murray, for all his flaws, was finally able to catalyze a solution by forcing 40-odd stakeholders, 40-odd stakeholders, to work together for over a year. Their tireless volunteer efforts, supported by outreach to hundreds of others, created the grand bargain and as part of that, the mandate for the MHA upzones we are working on today. The work done since to shape these upzones with the community has been broad and thoughtfully conducted. As a result, we now have a real chance to create over 6,000 income-restricted units citywide, as well as significantly increase overall supply of market rate housing. I urge you to continue your efforts to complete the MHA upzones and all of the rest of the hard-won parts of the grand bargain. They are vital not only to equity and opportunity for the citizens of our city today, but for all those from abroad and from the economically hurting parts of our country who come here for a chance at a new life. We don't need to be the kind of people who get ours and shut the door behind us. There is too much need for that. We have an opportunity to be the kind of people who move out of our comfort zone of what is and toward the courage of we, who we, and what our city might be. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Hello. My name is Laura Villarreal, and I'm here tonight with Seattle Tech for Housing in support of MHA in Districts 3 and 7. Thank you to city council for attending tonight and listening. I'd like to take one minute to share where I care about MHA. I worked in tech for years and was fortunate enough to afford a one-bedroom apartment in Capitol Hill. In those five years, I saw the cost of my one-bedroom almost double, from $875 to $1,600 a month. This past year, I made the decision to leave tech to work in education. I'm now technically a low-income Seattle resident, making below 80% of the area median income. I understood that with the salary change came lifestyle changes. I left Capitol Hill, I left my one-bedroom, and was fortunate to find wonderful roommates in a house in South Seattle. I know that my income level affects my options for how I can live, but I don't want it to restrict me from where I can live. I fear that if we don't do something to allow for a diversity of housing types in high-opportunity neighborhoods, like those in Districts 3 and 7, people like me will continue to be pushed farther away from the city. People like me who graduated from college, who have full-time jobs, who actively contribute to and participate in this community. It's inevitable that Seattle is growing, and it's inevitable that Seattle is changing. We can't deny this, but we can influence it. We have the opportunity to inform thoughtful livability of our neighborhoods. We have the opportunity to preserve a neighborhood's character while opening our arms to a diverse range of people who want to be our neighbors. People are coming to the city, change is coming to the city, and we can't put our heads down. It's going to happen if we embrace it or if we push it away. Please embrace it, and please move forward with MHA in Districts 3 and 7. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Hi, my name is Calvin Jones, and I'm a renter in District 3. I've been, I'm also here with Seattle Tech for Housing. I've been doing a lot of running lately, and so my Sunday morning ritual has become to wake up, drink an irresponsible amount of coffee, and then go for a jog. And my favorite place to run in the city is at the Washington Park Arboretum. I think it is one of the most beautiful places in the city, and if you wake up early enough, you can catch the sunrise at the northern tip of Foster Island, and it is really, really a sight to behold. My least favorite part about the arboretum is that if you look at a zoning map, it's nearly exclusively surrounded by single-family zoning. And I think if an alien came down and looked at our zoning map, they would say that, well, the city's beautiful parks must be only for those who are privileged enough, like myself, to live nearby those parks. And I think that's not something that we really believe in. I think that we all believe that the city's beauty should be for everybody, and that mandatory housing affordability will bring us more types of housing and more affordable housing into my neighborhood, which will allow more neighbors to appreciate the beauty that this city has to offer. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ethan Phelps Goodman, also with Seattle Tech for Housing. Thank you to all the city council members here, and thank you to the staff for putting this together. I first moved to Seattle in 2003. I've lived in Capitol Hill for the past six years until just two months ago, when I moved to First Hill. Been a renter that entire time, likely to be a renter for the foreseeable future. And I'm here to urge council to support mandatory housing affordability. I'm sure some people wonder why they should listen to somebody in tech or somebody not born in Seattle. I'm from the Bay Area originally, grew up there, went to school there. And I feel like I'm from a place that has seen this story before. I feel like the Bay Area has lived this story for generations, really. We've had a booming tech sector for generations, and we've had a housing policy in the Bay Area stuck in 1960s land use for that entire time. And you can go to the Bay Area and see what effect that has. The option to do nothing, to just hope that things get better, is what they have in the Bay Area, and things have not gotten better. Things get worse and worse and worse, and they do nothing. And I am so happy to be here in Seattle, where we have a political climate where we can actually make progress, where we can increase housing options, where we can increase funding for affordable housing. They don't have that in the Bay Area, and things are only getting worse there. So I urge council to move forward with mandatory housing affordability. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Zach, and I'm also a part of Seattle Tech for Housing. I only have 30 seconds, so I'll say, just pass this. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Ludwig. I'm going to be really quick as well, and I'm also a South African. I've been working in tech since I moved here in 2009. We bought a house near a light rail station, and even under MHA, most of the houses in my neighborhood, right near the Juggins Park Light Rail Station in I-90, are still going to be single-family homes, and it's unconscionable that we would have such expensive housing for people living near light rail, and I don't want my daughter to grow up near, in housing that's only for wealthy people. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Sanders? Chris Sanders, your group, 7A.
It's just me.
Oh, it's just you?
Yeah.
Okay, so just Chris. And then Margaret Okamoto, 7B, and Martin Kaplan, 8A.
Hi. My name is Chris Sanders. I'm an organizer for Seattle Tech for Housing, a renter in Queen Anne, and I'm here to support MHA. Councilmembers and staff, thank you for being here and holding tonight's hearing. I moved to Seattle four years ago for a job in tech, but I plan to stay here because of the progressive community that's welcomed me. In the past four years, I've seen the numbers of my neighbors experiencing homelessness grow exponentially, watched bungalows bulldoze for McMansions, and talked with friends as they struggled to find affordable rents. At the same time, our community made $15 the minimum wage, passed ST3, and mandated family, or paid family leave. But for us to realize the staying power and the promise of our shared progressive successes, we must have abundant and affordable housing, options for all of our neighbors. For $15 is only meaningful when it's livable. ST3 only provides opportunity when it's accessible, and family leave only benefits families when they have a place to call home. Growing up in a small, conservative town in the Midwest, Seattle's progressive promise and inclusive community offered me a stark alternative for the place that I am lucky to call home. I am here tonight in support of MHA so that both the next gay boy from the Midwest and my neighbors struggling here in Seattle to meet rent are able to continue to thrive in the city we all call home. But to do so, we need more homes for all of our neighbors. Thank you.
Margaret? 7B, Margaret Okamoto, Martin Kaplan, 8A, and then Bill Singer, 8B.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Okamoto, and thank you all for being here to take our testimony this evening. I am a 42-year-long resident of the top of Queen Anne Hill. I'm very devoted to my neighborhood, but my husband and I have retired, and housing prices are not what they used to be back in the '70s and '80s. And we live in a home that is quickly becoming, I fear, unaffordable to us. And no matter how long we may want to stay in it or even stay on Queen Anne, we may be faced with the prospect of not being able to afford to live on Queen Anne anymore. As we look around, it's a dilemma trying to figure out where in the city we can afford to live. We're retired, so our income isn't going to begin to be able to compensate for increases in property values. I also think that single-family homes should not be ruled out of the equation. I think it's very important for Seattle to have a diversity of housing in its housing stock. Single-family homes have traditionally meant that people live in neighborhoods for a long time, and they become the backbones of neighborhoods, and they offer stability to neighborhoods. I praise the goals of the mandatory housing affordability legislation, but my concern is it will not be able to meet those goals. On Queen Anne, there is no affordable housing going in. And as a matter of fact, one developer who was prospectively looking at where the current Safeway is was willing to forego extra height to be able to avoid all the red tape that goes along that goes along with it, and would rather pay into an affordable housing fund. But even the affordable housing fund will not be able to buy land on Queen Anne to make housing affordable for all.
Thank you, Margaret. Martin? Martin Kaplan, 8A, Bill Singer, 8B, John Scholes, 9A.
Good evening, council members. Martin Kaplan, architect, urbanist, lifelong supporter of smart growth and density, served quite a bit of time on the Seattle Planning Commission. And I want my daughter to return from college and live in this town where we came, where my family is third generation. I want to just focus on one thing tonight, and that's just the neighborhood component of the MHA legislation. Hola was brought forth as a way to integrate neighborhoods so there could be some social equity in housing throughout this city. It wasn't just to build affordable housing down in Othello or someplace up in Edmonds. It was to integrate the neighborhoods, and that's not happening. It's not going to happen under the current MHA proposal, and that's where the fatal flaw is. We want the affordable housing in our neighborhoods, and the idea that somebody could pay a meager fee, the fee in lieu that you've defined is the lowest in any city in America. It's nothing. For a, for a basic apartment that's 1,500 square foot, a developer pays about $18,000 into a, into a, into a fund. That 18 grand is the difference between what he will make in that year doing a market-rate unit. It's absurd, you guys, it's absurd. The other, the other promise is, is that if you look around the city right now, you can see affordable housing being torn down all through this city, and ubiquitous one-design boxes being installed. And that's what we're going to get. With this, with this legislation, nobody's going to build affordable housing, they're going to tear down the affordable house, and those that are building multifamily are going to pay a meager fee in lieu and have it, have the affordable housing be built on the edges, and what you'll be doing is you'll be promoting more expensive single-family housing.
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Phil?
My name is Bill Singer. I'm a 35-year resident of Seattle, and I'm also one of the directors of Environmental Works Community Design Center. We work with many of the neighborhood nonprofits and community groups who are addressing homelessness and the affordable housing crisis as architects. We see the effects of homelessness every day on the streets and sidewalks by our offices, and also in the neighborhoods we live. I'm personally seeing the effects of the affordability crisis with my two daughters who were born and raised here in Seattle and are now working professionals in their 20s and can barely afford to live in the community in which they were raised. The MHA upzone and the dollars that will go to affordable housing will help address some of these issues. They're going to help build permanent supportive housing for the chronically homeless population, as well as provide workforce housing for the individuals and families who just can't afford to live here on the paychecks that they receive. We really feel passionately about dealing with the effects of homelessness, and MHA is going to be one of our tools to, to affect this. People, we have to solve this problem, and we need to do it now. The crisis of homelessness has been going on too long, and this is one chance we have to start to address this problem. And I want to just, the, the staff and board of our organization, Environmental Works, strongly support the MHA upzone and the funds that will go help towards building more affordable housing units. Thank you.
Thank you. John Scholes, 9A, and then Jan Katzenberger, 9B, and Ruby Holland, 10A.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for the opportunity to testify, and thanks for being out throughout the city, listening and taking comments on this really important proposal. I'm John Scholes, head up the Downtown Seattle Association, and wanted to offer our very strong support for the proposal in front of you. We've been proud participants in the Seattle for Everyone effort with a broad coalition of interests throughout the city that are urging you to create more housing and more opportunity throughout the city. The welcome mat to Seattle has gotten narrower over the last decade and is, is open to those who can afford the high cost to live, to purchase and rent here and to live in Seattle. And the high cost of housing has had the effect of erecting invisible walls throughout our city that are keeping many people out. And this is contrary to how this city and many cities across the country developed 100-plus years ago, where they were open and porous to people from all different economic backgrounds who came with an idea, an invention, who came to take a risk, to take part in their city. And we benefit today from the contributions that those people made in our education institutions, our civic institutions, our community institutions, and the businesses in our city. And that is at risk today, because that welcome mat is narrow, and we are only allowing folks who can afford that high cost of, high price of housing to participate and to be within this city. You have an opportunity to change that, you have an opportunity to widen that welcome mat, bring down those invisible walls, and allow more people who work in the city to live, participate, and contribute, and I urge you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Jen?
Hi, thank you very much for hearing our comments this evening. The MHA proposal has some really good elements in it, but it also has some really big problems that need to be fixed before moving forward. Councilmember Mesquita, thank you so much for looking into some of those details and asking for them this morning, and Councilmember Johnson, you also asked for more details on that. So I appreciate that. We all want affordable housing in our neighborhoods, we want economic diversity in our neighborhoods, but this legislation, the way that it is right now, isn't going to give us that, and worse, it can give real harm to some very vulnerable people. That's why I'm asking you to hold city agencies accountable for fixing the problems that are in this legislation before moving forward. And I'll give you an, for instance, my next-door neighbor, she's retired, she has diabetes, and she is worried sick about how she's going to pay the taxes on her half of her little duplex. We don't live in a single-family zone. So in lieu fees raise housing prices, and what happens is those in lieu fees don't stay in the neighborhood to build affordable housing there, and that pushes, that pushes up taxes for landlords, for middle-income families, and for people on fixed incomes. Now, I made less than $50,000 last year. I'm not a rich person, but for 26 years, I voted for every single school levy, every parks levy, every transportation levy. I voted for emergency levies, and I invested in this community, and now that I'm looking to retirement, I find that I, I can't afford to retire in the community that I invested in. As I grow older, I become disposable to you folks, and that breaks my heart.
Thank you, Jen.
The message, the message, please fix it. Please fix this legislation before moving forward. Fix the displacement that you've, that you've put in place.
Thank you, Jen. Ruby? Ruby Holland, 10A, followed by Tim Trhemevich, 10B.
My name is Ruby Holland. Our family home has been in the central area since 1963. I am in an upzone, and I am at high risk of being displaced. As older seedy homeowners pass away and move, or move to a system living, their children who have been priced out of Seattle find that their best option is to sell the family home. This voluntary displacement has been going on now, and it will continue to grow on, go on in the future. The MHA is marketed, marketed as creating affordable housing, but it will do the exact opposite. Residents who are already living affordably will be involuntarily displaced by apartments in which the developer can opt out of having affordable units on site. To dis, to displace all of these people in order to make apartments that only wealthy people can afford to live in is unconscionable, and it should be criminal. As a member of the Sierra Club, I fought to protect habitat, to ensure safe and healthy communities, and to protect the quality of the human environment. The MHA will do the exact opposite. I suspect that the city of Seattle has paid good money to quiet dissenting voices in our community. However, this MHA is a sham, and if it's allowed to proceed, the truth will come to the light. Lastly, I would like to challenge anybody who feels that displacement is a worthy goal to offer up your home or your parents' home to greedy developers. They will love you for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ruby. Tim Trhemevich, 10B, followed by Tona Peretti, 11A. Tina, I'm sorry.
Good evening, my name's Tim Trhemevich. I'm the director of planning and law for Futurewise. I'm a 25-year resident of Capitol Hill. I have 35 years of planning experience in Washington State. One of the areas of my expertise is housing planning. If you look at the peer-reviewed technical literature on housing displacement, it shows that you have to do several things. One is you have to build more housing, and even more importantly, you have to build more affordable housing. That is what mandatory housing affordability will do. Mandatory housing affordability is not the whole solution to housing affordability or displacement in Seattle, but it is an important part of the solution. Futurewise strongly urges you to adopt it. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you. I'm sorry, didn't realize it was Tina Peretti, I apologize for that. Tina, you're going to be followed by Natasha Pietala, 11B, and then Alexander with your group, 12A.
Okay, start with me.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, I came here to put a face on the displaced people. When you see innocent people outside in the street, there's a much larger community of people who dress just like I do, and they go in Starbucks, and they wash, and they go to work. We don't, everyone doesn't have opportunities to leave Seattle and go anywhere else. Some of us are here. I'm one of those people that is fortunate enough to get into a 30% apartment building, and sometimes, I live in South Lake Union, and it's really free because they're taking whole blocks, whole sections. And so you often wonder, are they going to come tear our place down too? Because everything has changed, and as soon as they open up the luxury buildings, all the rest is, they don't have that 30%, or 80%, or 60%, and they're all luxury buildings. We still have holes being dug, and it's not, it's all luxury buildings. When I became homeless, it was due to domestic violence, and what you have to go through, and when you go through that, it's just sad. And it's like, the government doesn't care, or the city doesn't care what happens. And when you see the people out there, they're not there because they want to be, they're there because they have nowhere else to go. They don't have a house to go to, and they really want one, they need help. They need drugs, they need to help them, and they need mental health. And a lot of that could be solved with having somewhere to live. I'm on waiting lists that are like five or six years long. I don't know if I'll even be here by the time that comes. So I would like you to please find something that's affordable for everybody, because I live somewhere, I'm seeing luxury buildings go up, but there's no place for us to go. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Appreciate your time. Natasha?
Good evening, my name is Natasha Pietala. I am a graduate student pursuing my MSW at UW. I work on Capitol Hill and lived on the hill for one year before I was priced out. My fiance is a cook at Fair Start. We are both from the Bay Area in California, and so know the path that Seattle is on. We know what happens when people of color are displaced, when people with low-wage jobs can no longer afford to live near their work, when the city effectively becomes a gated community for white, wealthy people. This is not the city that we want, and it is sadly the reality in many Seattle neighborhoods already, and it is where we are quickly heading citywide. This is why we need to not only adopt MHA zoning citywide, we also need to reexamine our alignment to our values as a city. Seattle aspires to be an inclusive, welcoming, accessible city, a city that stands against rising fascism and that celebrates diversity. We cannot be the city without massive increases in affordable housing. A foundational piece of a healthy democracy is affordable, accessible housing. This allows our neighborhoods to be rich with diversity. This allows people to build relationships through identities, to find commonalities with their neighbors, to better understand the needs and experiences of others, and to build creative solutions to problems together. We therefore need the number of affordable units that MHA projects, as well as the beautiful variety of homes it allows. We need this policy because it is an important step forward. It is most definitely not enough, and the process of getting to this point has been long, rough, and frankly, very exclusive. I encourage you, our elected officials, to pass this policy and to develop robust equitable plans for working with those most consistently negatively affected by policy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The AIA Group, the Americans Association of Architects Group, Alexander, your group is next, 12A, followed by Austin Valeski, 12B, and Anne Marie Lowe, 13A.
Alexander Froelich, co-chair of the American Institute of Architects, Seattle Homelessness Task Force, and a renter in Queen Anne. As architects concerned with the shape and inclusivity of our city, we believe that 6,000 affordable units in 10 years is timid, and that the density legalized is insufficient but a good start. It's a moral failing that we can't accommodate our neighbors without access to Seattle's immense wealth, but rejecting this proposal and doing nothing is unreasonable. The proposed legislation is not perfect, and while the AIA supports it for the reasons you will hear from my cohort here, our diverse membership includes supporters and skeptics. As architects, we recognize that none of these upzones will transform neighborhoods overnight, and arguments about neighborhood character are often racist and classist. In spite of good research, MHA maps do not affect all communities equally, and we support sharing new development across all neighborhoods. We intend to hold the city accountable for maintaining and updating this program to meet the goals we can all agree on. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anton Decum. I'm a registered architect, and I've been a renter on Capitol Hill for the last five and a half years. It's clear that Seattle is growing, and I believe that MHA will help direct that growth towards positive outcomes. MHA is currently written, requires funds generated through the payment option to stay in the communities where the project was originally built. I support that part of the legislation, but I urge council to increase the number of performance units that are built as part of that. Currently, according to the city's affordable housing production model, only 1,000 of the 6,320 units that are planned will be performance units. Council should increase payment fees to get that closer to a 50-50 split. Thank you.
My name is Veronica Gunther, and I'm a renter here in Capitol Hill. I greatly appreciate the privilege of living in this vibrant, walkable neighborhood, and I want our city to be accessible to all income levels in the interest of equal opportunity, but also because the continuing vibrancy of this place hinges on ensuring mixed-income neighborhoods. Growing up in this area and attending college here, my life has greatly benefited from proximity to Seattle's great educational opportunities, transit centers, job options, and enriching cultural diversity. Geographic access to these opportunities should be available to all people regardless of economic status. Furthermore, promoting affordable housing not only increases economic diversity within our neighborhoods, but also increases the essential social and cultural diversity that makes our communities vibrant. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily, and I'm an architect and a homeowner in the Montlake neighborhood. Seattle is changing whether we like it or not, and we need to enable our city to catch up to the demand, increasing capacity for new homes, but also ensuring that Seattle's affordable housing stock continues to grow. This legislation represents a way to grow Seattle without making significant changes to single-family zones. Despite the fact that single-family zones make up almost half of Seattle's land area, only urban villages will be upzoned. While it makes sense to increase density in areas that have the resources and amenities that can support an increase in development, really, we can... that can support an increase in development, really, we can do more. This part of the plan I'd like to see changed. Every neighborhood, despite its racial and socioeconomic makeup, should share in this density increase. I'd like to see thoughtful density in Montlake and other single-family white neighborhoods. The bottom line is this: Families and individuals across Seattle are struggling to keep up with rising rents and home prices. Seattle, Seattle, we can do better. Rather than arguing for an approach that would leave our friends and neighbors behind, I say we move forward with this appropriate response as quickly as possible and work to improve it in the future.
Hello, my name is Becca Book. I'm an urban designer and architect, and perhaps most relevantly, a renter in Capitol Hill. Both longtime Seattle residents, property owners, and housing advocates have identified shortcomings in this bill. To those who question the details of the compromises that have been made, I would point you to Seattle's 12,000 homeless humans, 43% of whom were renting an apartment before they lost their homes. In the last two years, the Seattle City Government has solicited input on this issue, a commendable process that has resulted in any number of compromises. While the quantities required for payments and densities can be adjusted to fit our city as it continues to evolve, our representatives need to demonstrate the city's commitment to providing affordable housing now. The dense, vibrant, and diverse neighborhoods which this policy lays a framework for provide a foundation which we can be proud to continue to grow on. We can't afford to talk about it any longer. We need action.
Austin Valeski, 12B, you're going to be followed by Anne Marie Lowe, 13A, and Bonnie Porter, 13B.
Good evening, council members. My name is Austin Valeski, and I'm a queer renter living on Capitol Hill, and I organize with the Capitol Hill Renters Initiative. Over the past few years, as housing costs have risen, more and more of my friends have been pushed off of the Hill, they're having to leave our community and move away from institutions like Gay City and support services like Lifelong. Seattle aspires to be a welcoming city for everyone, and right now, we're dropping the ball. Because of this, I'm strongly in favor of MHA and the affordable housing it will create. We need to zone for as many homes as possible without triggering the delay of another EIS. But MHA alone will not be enough. We must go further. Firstly, as we know, Seattle's highly segregated nature is a product of our history of redlining and exclusive single-family zones. It is time to right that wrong and allow more home types in every neighborhood, especially neighborhoods like Queen Anne, Madison Miller, and others in North Seattle that have a low displacement risk and high access to opportunity. Additionally, organizations in the city and South Seattle have expressed concern about the impact of upzones on their already vulnerable communities. I encourage council to reach out to them, and, if they would like, explore adding additional protections or moving zoning capacity from their neighborhoods to North Seattle, or to North Seattle, Capitol Hill, and other areas with high opportunity. Secondly, we need a massive increase in public housing, and after we pass the employee hours tax, we're going to need a place to build it. In 65% of Seattle, it is illegal to build something as low-impact as a duplex, let alone a fourplex or a three-story apartment building. But you can build a multimillion-dollar, three-story mansion. By comparison, in Portland, only 3% of the city bans duplexes. After passing MHA, we must lift this apartment ban. I'm looking forward to a Seattle where people from all walks of life can enjoy every neighborhood with our corner stores and walkable neighborhoods that are accessible to everyone, and the opportunities and benefits of Seattle's growth are broadly shared. Seattle needs more homes of all shapes and sizes in every neighborhood for all our neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anne Marie? Anne Marie Lowe, 13A, and then Bonnie Porter, 13B.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Lowe, and Councilwoman Marisa Wont. I'm pleased to see you. I've addressed this group and Rob's group three times, and I've never seen you at any of these, so I'm delighted that you're here to hear from your constituency. I live at 19th and Roy. I'm on the historic red line through the city, and unfortunately, it appears it's still a red line through the city. We see that the housing that's being targeted by the upzoning in my neighborhood, in the Madison Miller neighborhood, is already zoned for multifamily. It's already zoned to accommodate a great number of types of housing and types of people. What we've seen in the last 20 years, and certainly in the last 18 that I have been there, is mass displacement from this neighborhood due to the zoning that already exists. We've seen the racial makeup.
I support the proposal. I would urge you to take a look at the details of the proposal. In my own neighborhood, I'm a little concerned about the boundaries of zoning. We saw a very nice slide in the PowerPoint presentation showing a gradual transition of zoning from a single-family home to low-rise and maybe even higher zoning in the distance. That was the image in the slide. That's not the image that I'm seeing in some of the boundaries that have been drawn for the proposal. So I would urge you to look at those transitions and make, perhaps take a closer look where you see boundaries that are rather abrupt. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Sampson, 15A, you're going to be followed by Dana Dumas, 15B, and then Tieran Martin, 16A.
Hi, my name is Bill Sampson, and I live in District 4 in View Ridge. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk today. I volunteer with the Sierra Club, and I support MHA and PAULA because a lot of people are moving to Seattle and getting displaced right now. And if we don't build more dense, affordable housing, then we're going to end up with suburban sprawl, and I would much rather see dense urban villages. I think it's really the only way to keep Seattle livable and to be able to move people around. I live in single-family homes, but I'm near the Roosevelt Urban Village, and I'm really excited about some of the plans there to improve bus and bike lanes so that there's more diversity of ways that people can move around. I'd also like to talk about some values, emotions, and housing issues. I recently went to an event where we did a visioning exercise connecting values and emotions on one side and housing issues on the other side, so you can connect transit and bike lanes with freedom, liberty, and autonomy, and you can connect urban-village strategy, a housing issue, with local pride and fairness. And other connections, I think it's important to remember, we're talking about housing today, but I also want to talk about the tax issue. I went to the tax rally on Saturday. Thank you for, thank you, Teresa, for speaking at that and fighting for, trying to fix our upside-down tax code, which is one reason why we're in an affordable housing crisis in the first place. So I think it's important to work on all these sorts of issues of transportation, housing, and our tax code, and see how they're connected and related. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Dana? Dana Dumas, 15B. Dana, are you here? 15B?
Hi, hi. My name is Doug Dumas. I live on 16th Avenue East, directly behind the QFC that is going to be developed by Hunter's Capital. It's my understanding from speaking with them that they're going to develop that property to its maximum, given the new zone. This is going to be a 55-foot mixed-use building directly adjoining the alley of single-family residences. That's 16 and a half feet. That's less than the distance from me to you. Although I have feelings about what is happening to Seattle, specifically my neighborhood, I cannot help but understand that citywide rezoning is not only necessary but imperative. In my neighborhood, the small quirky 15th Avenue Business District will eventually cease to exist as we know it. It will not be the place I have come to love the past 38 years I have lived there. Like the Capitol Hill I found and grew to love when I moved here from Atlanta as a 26-year-old, the new Capitol Hill will hold the same charm and excitement for the new population of young people who are the age I was when I moved here. Seattle will be a new city, just as it has always been from its founding on the backs of the Duwamish, the rebuilding of San Francisco with Northwest Timber, through the Boeing and World War II booms, to the modern technological age we live in now. It will be a new city for the young people that are moving here at the rate of almost 1,000 per week. We had ours. It is time to give them their city. It is not right for my generation to hold on to memories and to try and stop the future. I hold the deepest admiration and respect for what you are all going through and trying to do. It is a thankless and daunting task. We should be thankful we have as diverse and smart a city council as we have. Thank you all for your hard work.
Doug, that was very kind. I'm sorry that I couldn't read your name and call you Dana. I apologize. Thank you. Tieran Martin, 16A, followed by Ryan Packer, 16B, and then Judy Gibbs, 17A. Tieran?
Good evening, council members. My name is Tieran Martin. My wife and I live in District 2, where we rent a small apartment, but I'm here tonight to voice my support for the mandatory housing affordability policy because it's going to impact everyone living throughout our city. As you know, no city in the country has solved the puzzle of how to provide enough housing for all the people who wish to live in these places, both for residents who have been there for a long time and newcomers alike. Our city is grappling with this issue, and we shouldn't expect this policy or any other single action to solve it. But this policy is a crucial tool for forging a solution that will allow me, my wife, and all of our neighbors to have access to a variety of types of housing tomorrow and for all the years to come. Once MHA is finally adopted, I strongly urge you to open up the areas of our city that are zoned exclusively for single-family homes, and that you also revisit the engagement process with an eye towards including as many communities of color and low-income households as possible. Thank you for your leadership on this difficult but crucial issue. Please vote yes on MHA and show courage in your search for additional equitable housing policies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tieran. Ryan? Ryan Packer, 16B, followed by Judy Gibbs, 17A.
Hi there. My name is Ryan. I'm a renter on Capitol Hill, one of the tens of thousands of people in our majority renter city who lives with a low-grade fear of rent increases that will push us out of our neighborhoods every day. These zoning changes and their affordability requirements should happen as quickly as possible, but after the rezon has taken effect, it will remain illegal to build multifamily housing in 90% of our city. Around Capitol Hill Station, our major light rail station, high-rises still won't be allowed. Meanwhile, in northeast Seattle, on the site of the Tularis Conference Center, a 10-minute bus ride to Light Rail, 63 single-family homes are proposed on 18 acres with no affordability requirement. This is a failure on massive scale. Excluding areas like Montlake, right next to Husky Stadium Station, vast portions of North Capitol Hill, Madison Valley, and Laurelhurst simply reemphasizes past land-use wrongs and squanders investment in transit intended to last for generations. Furthermore, 50% of Seattle's greenhouse gas emissions come from passenger vehicles. The only way to fix that is to rejigger our land use. The quickest way for Seattle to fight climate change is to invest in public transit and reform or outdated inequitable land-use code to reflect the reality of the world we live in. That's the true livability agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Judy? Judy, you're going to be followed by the County Labor Council Group.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Judy.
Okay, okay. I'm Judy Gibbs, and in the course of upzoning, the city sorely needs to consider buffer zones as a transition to the multi-story buildings. And city code also requires that new buildings fit in with the neighborhood, and that's particularly true when the city waives or provides exemptions to current code. About 18 months ago, work started on a new three-unit building in our neighborhood. It was originally supposed to be four, which would have required a design review. The next thing we knew they were building, we asked about the design review. The developer had gone to three units so he could skip the design review, and the result has been disastrous. The builder was allowed to make the building six and a half feet above code. It does not fit into the neighborhood, and the result is a visual nightmare that the neighborhood refers to as the monstrosity, capital M. You've got some photos. I just made sure you got photos. Increasing allowable heights in NC-40 zones will make the situation worse. If that happens in our neighborhood, it will make the monstrosity look like a little brother. The MHA must consider buffer zones between zones of significant contrast in height, bulk, and scale. Please do not allow height allowances in NC-40 zones that are but single-family zones. And I will also add, since I haven't been it, that the monstrosity has no parking, and if this continues, parking's going to be a major issue as well. And we do not have good enough bus service where I live to provide what we need. So this is another issue, is lack of parking. But the biggest issue is the lack of transition zones, and you can see that from the two photos I've provided. It's a disaster.
Thank you, Judy. Nicole Grant, your County Labor Council Group. Nicole, you're next, 17B, and then Pete Kurtz-Globus, 18A, and then Aaron Rantz, 19A.
Thank you, council members. Nicole Grant, and I'm the head of the Martin Luther King County Labor Council, which represents 150,000 workers in King County and over 150 unions. And one thing we have in common is everybody is worried about affordability in this community. There are 100,000 people moving to King County every year, and we have a choice now. We can have an opportunity to have one of the most vibrant, incredible metropolises on earth, or we can have a humanitarian crisis by doing nothing and have people in the streets like we see today. The Labor Council supports mandatory affordable housing, and we support upzones. We think this is a great start, and that coupled with the corporate hours tax, which will raise tens of millions of dollars a year to spend on truly affordable and low-income housing, we can have that future that we want and take that opportunity.
Thank you, Nicole.
Hi, I'm Charlie. I work with Nicole at the King County Labor Council, and I'm a union member of OPEIU, and I'm a renter in Queen Anne. I'll keep what I have to say fairly short. So at the Labor Council, we represent hundreds of thousands of workers all across our region. And I think something that really speaks to this issue is when we're talking to workers and trying to see if any of them can come out here today and speak, we had trouble finding workers that could come and speak today because they don't live in Seattle. They've been pushed out. They live in Kent, they live in Auburn, they live in Federal Way. They work here in Seattle, but so few of them can afford to live in Seattle anymore. They teach our kids, they work in our hospitals, they maintain our roads, but they've been pushed out of our community.
Thank you, Charlie.
And for the working-class people that do live here, they're seeing, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Charlie. I think we mistimed you as a group. You were supposed to have five minutes. Let's give them just one more minute, Spencer, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I wasn't even looking at the clock. And I was going to say, for the working-class people that do live here, rent is capturing a bigger and bigger portion of their income into them. That's a pay cut. And so, this is an exciting city. That's why so many people are moving here. That's why I live here, but we have a crisis, and so that's why I support MHA. I feel like it's the right thing to do for our city, for the working people that live here, for the environment, and for the future of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete's, 18A, and then Aaron Rantz, 19A.
Hello, my name is Pete Kurtz-Globus. I am a housing advocate, social services professional. I'm here with Seattle for Housing tonight, and I just wanted to offer some perspective as a social services professional. I've been doing it for about four years now. I work for homeless and low-income folks all throughout King County, and it's a tough job. And every day, I have people coming in asking for housing, asking for some sort of assistance to get into housing, and almost every day, I have to tell them, "I'm sorry, there's nothing available. We have nothing out there to move you in." We have nothing out there to move you into. There's a little bit of transitional housing, but even then, the best they can do is stick you up there in Edmonds or Everett or Linwood or Kent or anywhere outside of the city." It's forcing people out, and worse, it's a barrier to housing. We have 11,000 people living on the street, and the fact of the matter is, many of them are dying. Every year, I've watched people. I've learned their names, I've learned their stories, and I've watched them die on the street. There was over 130 last year alone, and it's a tough thing to watch. And every person in social services I knows still gets up and goes to work every day knowing that somebody that they work with, one of their clients, could be dead that day. I have one person in my mind right now that I've been terrified for. She just lost housing about a month ago, and I have nowhere to put her. There's nowhere else to go. I'd like to use the rest of my time as a moment of silence for those who have died Thank you. Please fund mandatory housing and Hala.
Thank you, Pete. Erin? Erin Rantz, 19A. Erin, are you here? Going once. Erin Rantz, 19A. 19B, Chris Copley. Chris, are you still here? 19B? It's going to go faster. 20A, Sharon Levine. Yeah, thank you. 20A, Sharon Levine. Sharon, you're going to be followed by 20B, Barbara Dahlman. If you wouldn't mind pulling the microphone down, that would be great.
Good evening. 29 community groups who support affordable housing, livability, and equity are appealing the many flawed MHA plans. Some reasons are: One, current zoning codes and SDCI supervision are now so lax that developers are building more structures per parent lot than allowed by existing zoning, thus raising values and property taxes for neighboring residents to unaffordable levels. Two, the MHA creates market-rate housing, not affordable housing, in the closest neighborhoods to the city's core. Three, existing low-cost housing is being destroyed, not replaced, so that developers get the highest maximized return on their investments. Four, longtime residents, retired persons, the disabled, and low-income Seattleites are being forced from their homes by escalating property values and taxes. Five, $13 per square foot fees are so low that developers build market-rate and contribute to the fund. And six, the fund will maximize only if the city builds the most affordable housing in areas furthest from the city's core. It won't be distributed within neighborhoods. The MHA number seven is only about density and doesn't provide for any infrastructure to accommodate the growth. Eight, residential small lots in Section F to allow division of potentially all single-family lots throughout the city, not just in urban villages. That was added to the final EIS without any public outreach or study in the draft EIS, and it's imperative that RSL, residential small lot impacts, must be studied through a complete EIS process. Nine, MHA disregards previously adopted neighborhood plans that provide for growth while actually retaining neighborhood character and livability.
Thank you, Sharon.
And ten, Seattle currently has enough zoning capacity to meet growth targets for many years. There's no need to densify and destroy the character and livability of all neighborhoods.
Thank you. Barbara? Barbara, 20B, you're going to be followed by Whitney Rierich, 21A, and Rick Hooper, 21B.
Great, thank you. Again, my name is Barb Dahlman, and I'm here with the Madison Miller Park community and as an employee of Holy Names Academy. Just for some background information, Holy Names Academy is the oldest continually operating school in Washington State, serving young women in grades nine through 12 from diverse ethnic, economic, and religious backgrounds. We're located adjacent to the north boundary of the Madison Miller Urban Village on Capitol Hill. Our community consists of approximately 800 faculty, staff, and students commuting from 86 different ZIP codes. Currently, 69% of our faculty, staff, and students arrive to school as a passenger in a carpool, on public transit, or by walking and biking. The other 31% consist of carpools and single-drivers who park at HNA and in the neighborhood. Many who park in the neighborhood do so because public transportation isn't easily accessible to where they live, or they also have jobs or participate in community service after school. Off-street parking has become a challenge in our neighborhood and will get much worse if new development projects at the Madison Miller Urban Village are not required to provide parking. The inability to park in the neighborhood would adversely affect Holy Names Academy to operate in the neighborhood, a neighborhood we've been a part of for more than 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Whitney? Whitney Rierich, 21A, followed by Rick Hooper, 21B.
Hi there. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Whitney Rierich, and I'd like to invite my fellow testifiers to disclose how much you pay per month in housing costs, whether you're a renter, owner, doesn't matter, been here a long time, new. Just go ahead, and I'll start. Just for context, I pay $3,000 a month to rent a single-family home in the Central District. I used to rent for about $1,100 a month just the year before last in the Madison Miller District that people have been talking about here. It was a vibrant, great place to live. I loved it. There was lots of places to walk, to restaurants, and businesses, and it was just great. But there's a lot of capacity for more housing there. I say, just go ahead and add more density there. They can handle it, and there's a lot of businesses to support it, too, and they support the businesses. In where I live now, off of Union Street in the Central District, I would love to see that same kind of vibrancy. We could use the jobs there, we could use the restaurants so that we don't have to go outside of our neighborhood to find a restaurant. There's a smattering of them, and they're terrific, and we should all support them, but there's not as much as in other areas. So I guess my point in sharing my rent, too, is to say that preserving existing zoning is not going to help. A lot of people are resisting this, and it's just not going to help because I am living in a single-family home, paying $3,000 a month in rent. It's kind of nuts, and this is really about MHA. MHA and upzones are really about income inequality, because as long as I'm paying $3,000 a month, I cannot afford to save so I can buy a house, and we can't afford to build more houses. There's just not enough room to build houses in Seattle. So there's no way I'm going to be able to sock away enough money by paying $3,000 a month in rent. So build more housing, I guess is where I'm going with this. Thanks.
Thank you, Whitney. Rick? Rick, you're going to be followed by Rob Harrison and then Ellen Milne.
Great, thank you. My name is Rick Hooper. I'm an Uptown resident and a co-president of Uptown Alliance. We have commented before about how critically important the MHA program is to help address our affordable housing crisis, especially in council districts three and seven. Last fall, we worked with the city to incorporate MHA requirements into new zoning for the Uptown Urban Center. Already, we are working with developers on a number of new projects that will creatively help to provide new affordable units in Uptown. It's not easy. It takes persistence, but MHA can work. Now we need it extended into other areas within districts three and seven. Please use the weeks ahead to continue to work with and listen to Urban Villages about crafting legislation that connects well with local issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Rob? You're going to be followed by Ellen Milne, 22B, and then Emily Johnston, 23A.
All right. Good evening, council members. My name is Rob Harrison. I've lived in Seattle for 28 years, and I'm a single parent and a renter. I now live in the CD. I pay $2,300 and $2,300, about $2,300 per month for my two-bedroom apartment. I'm grateful that I was able to find an apartment in the area I wanted to be in, close to Garfield High School where my son is in ninth grade. I'm here to express my strong support for mandatory housing affordability and the upzones that are necessary to make it possible, but I want you to be bolder. A June 2017 KUW poll of Seattle residents revealed that 48% of respondents favored opening up single-family zones to multifamily buildings. 22% said they weren't sure, so that's 70% so far. Only 29% were opposed. Be bold and move ahead on this. 21% of American households now live in multi-generational housing. More and more people want to live with their families and friends, co-living in various types, but housing like this is basically illegal on 65% of Seattle's land. Be bold and change this. Climate change is the social justice issue of our time. Stockholm Environment Institute said that to meet Seattle's carbon-neutral goal is by 2050, which, by the way, is too late, 80% of Seattle buildings must be built or renovated to meet passive house levels of performance. There are currently two commercial buildings, one renovated school, one townhouse, and about a dozen single-family homes in Seattle that meet that or a similar standard. Be bold, be on the right side of justice and of history, and make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Ellen?
My name is Ellen Milne. I've called Capitol Hill Home since 1997, and I'm a renter, and I support MHA. I choose to live on the Hill because of the diversity of its residents, and so I can live car-free and walk or use transit to work, shop, and live. It's why I chose to live here 20 years ago, and it's why I live here now. The studio I lived in 20 years ago was built in 1925 as Seattle University nursing student housing. As an art student going to school full-time with a part-time job and outside financial support, it was barely affordable. That apartment now rents for three times what I paid then. A student or artist couldn't hope to live there now. In my current 1965 building near 15th and Mercer, where I've lived for 13 years, its tenant community ranges from young students sharing a three-bedroom to retirees who have lived in the building for over 40 years. When my elderly neighbors need help, I help them, whether running errands or a stronger hand opening a jar. When my neighbor's cat got sick last fall, I went with her to the vet for support. I'm having surgery next month, and my next-door neighbor is taking me to and from the hospital and helping me afterwards. Don't tell me we're not a community because we don't live in single-family homes and we're just renters. Sadly, my rent has doubled in the past decade. My salary hasn't. Many friends and neighbors are feeling this crunch. One downsized to a studio last year to stay in the Capitol Hill community that's her home. She works two jobs to make ends meet and saves to go back to college if the price of living in Seattle doesn't force her out. Her rent went up again this year, and she's probably leaving next year. I'm a graphic designer and creative services manager. In decades past, my job would have been solid middle-class, and I could plan to own my own home, but with steep rent increases, I can barely keep renting on Capitol Hill, let alone save money to buy. None of the three graphic designers I manage even live in Seattle because they can't afford to raise their families here. We can barely afford to live in the community we've helped build. If Seattle doesn't provide additional housing types and density, we'll destroy the diversity and community I cherish in my neighborhood. If anything, MHA and Hala are not aggressive enough to save the community I love. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily? Emily Johnston, 23A, followed by Eric Rundell, 23B.
Hi, and thank you. So it's clear that with the homelessness crisis and the affordability crisis, very few things could be more of a moral imperative than building lots more housing now. Seattle cannot be a sanctuary city if nobody can afford to live here. We can't be a progressive city if we don't welcome newcomers, and we cannot be sustainable if we keep pushing people out of the city to live in the suburbs where they have to drive everywhere. That also gets rid of our wild spaces, et cetera, et cetera. In addition to the housing crisis and the homelessness crisis and the affordability crisis, the climate crisis overwhelms everything else, and people who live in walkable urban neighborhoods have had less than half of the carbon footprint of people who live in the suburbs. Scientists have told us that we have less than two years to begin radically reducing emissions, like, and I'm talking about 20% a year, kind of radical. We cannot do that by pushing people out of the city. We have to encourage as many people as we can to be living in the city. We have to be building up our transit to be serving those people and making our neighborhoods walkable and bikeable and safe. Additionally, I'd like to address the idea that we are preserving neighborhood character when we stop building. I am really concerned about the soul of our city when people care about architectural character more than they care about us being a progressive and beautiful city. We have to make room for new people. We have to be dynamic and vibrant. Cities are places that change. Cities are places that absorb people, and if you like wild places, if you like farms, if you like meadows, you have to let people live in cities. Additionally, with all of the venom around developers, I think a lot of these people are under the misunderstanding that there are going to be developers living in all of those buildings. And somebody said, you know, they're not, they're only talking, they're not talking to residents, they're only talking to developers. It is people who are going to be living in those units. Whether they are affordable or whether they are expensive, it is people who are going to be living there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eric Rundell? Eric Rundell? No Eric? How about Louise Locke, 24A? Julie Genovese, 24B? Julie, you're going to be followed by Marty Jacobs, 25A.
Hi. Thank you guys for being here tonight and for hearing all of us. My name is Julie Genovese. I'm a resident of Queen Anne. I've lived there for six years. Before moving to Seattle 12 years ago, I lived in Salt Lake City, where I lived and was raised, in Salt Lake City. At the young age of six months old, I was homeless. My mom of three, my single mother of three, could not afford local rents, so we were homeless, living in our car. Then we were in emergency housing, transitional housing, and then we were on Section 8 vouchers for a while, until she made $10 cents an hour more. Doesn't matter. Anyway, I moved to Seattle for opportunity. I landed on my feet, but not many people who ended up in homelessness or experienced homelessness at any point in their life do. I've lived here for 12 years. I've met my husband, who moved here from the Bay Area. He moved here to start his company because it's affordable here, and he employs 40 people, who, a lot of them commute from all over King County because it's not affordable to live in downtown Seattle. We live on Queen Anne because we love Queen Anne. We visit the Bay Area a lot because he still has friends there, and I see the detrimental effects of not planning for growth. So I love that you guys are working on MHA. I know it's just a piece of Hala. It's just a piece. It's not perfect, but it is better than what the Bay Area is doing, and I just urge you to do whatever you can to plan for growth because people are moving here in the droves, and I know why. I moved here for opportunity. I love Seattle. I love Queen Anne, and I want everybody else to appreciate and experience what I love as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Marty Jacobs? Marty, as you make your way down, you take us to about the halfway point, Marty.
Yes.
And you're going to be followed by Laura Lowes' group, 25B. Go ahead, Laura.
Good evening, and thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk with you tonight. I'm Marty Jacobs. I've lived on Capitol Hill since 1979. My family has supported increasing low-income housing for 30 years as we've supported various affordable housing providers. I believe that city efforts to increase affordable housing are essential. While I understand that this is not a hearing to discuss any particular development, we can't ignore the impact MHA changes have on future plan development. Therefore, I'm here to talk about the plan development on 15th Avenue East on the current side of a QFC, several businesses, and a small number of dwelling units. I welcome a more robust business and housing development there. My concern is related to the scale and height of the new building, however. As I understand it, current zoning allows for a four-story building, and the MHA changes would then allow for another story. I honestly believe that four stories is the appropriate scale for that area of 15th Avenue East, and would like to see that as a limit on the site. I support MHA, and I encourage the city to take care, to protect, and maintain neighborhoods with existing organic density and diversity. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Laura's group is going to be followed by Cecilia Guerniz, 26A.
Hello. Thank you for letting us speak tonight in the neighborhood instead of having folks go downtown. I'm Laura. I live in the U District. I'm a Seattle renter. I'm a musician, and I consider myself an independent climate and housing justice advocate. I was also born in Bogota, Columbia. I've been speaking on the issues of housing and land use in Seattle and across the country daily for two years. I've taught myself wonky jargon, learned to masterfully use my Google Calendar, acrobatically arranged pet sitters, and recently changed my bus-driving schedule to match the council's schedule. Speaking on land use means I have immense privilege. We need to find a better way to solicit community input on our future because our future will then be determined right now only by a very small number of community members. Media who are watching, you have to remember that the folks in this room do not represent the community. the community. They represent only themselves. Attending and testifying at hearings is something many people I know cannot do, they will not do. They don't want to speak, they're afraid of what their employer's going to do, they're scared to speak. Public speaking is scary. They get nervous, they lose time with their families, they have caregiving responsibilities. By asking people to show up here, we are asking people to skip life events in their direct circles of support. There are deep structural failings around civic engagement and in our land use policies themselves. A lot of people have mentioned those land use policy failures. We have failed people most when a house purchased on a 5,000-square-foot lot is forbidden, forbidden from becoming anything except a mini mansion for wealthy, car-centric homebuyers looking to live like suburbanites in a thriving city. We have made illegal housing types that were common a century ago. Missing middle housing, you've heard this before tonight, courtyard housing, row homes, corner stores. The bare minimum in Seattle should be four floors and corner stores. We should have 12 plexes everywhere with courtyards and shared spaces for multi-generational cohousing. We need land trusts, we need all sorts of solutions. MHA is one thing out of 65 things in Hala, and it's getting all the focus, and it's so frustrating. We need to re-legalize all the housing choices on every street in Seattle, fix condo laws so people can have ownership opportunities. Equity is not about a few affordable units. Equity is a right to housing, it's radical change, radical, radical change in our idea of what an American dream is, how we see housing, not as a commodity, not financialized, but as a basic necessity. Equity is demanding resources that have been stolen get returned to folks, and reparations happen. The privileged bear a burden. Equity means reallocating funds for housing that are currently planned to jail kids or put military-style amenities in the North Police Bunker. Equity means that while we wait and wait and wait and wait for a city or state income tax, we need to swiftly pass an employee hours tax so we have funds for permanent affordable housing. Equity means renters need protection when they are economically evicted, with year after year of $200 rent increases like I've experienced. Please, please, please. MHA is one tiny thing. Look at the whole picture, zoom out, look across the country. This is happening in every city. This is a global issue. This is about the financialization of housing. We have to fix that, too.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Cecile? Cecile, you're going to be followed by Rennie Elliott, 26B, and then Jesse Simpson, 27A. Cecile?
Hi, everyone. My name is Cecile Gurnez. I'm an organizer with the Sierra Club. I'm here to say that the Sierra Club supports affordable housing because it aligns with our mission to protect our communities and the environment. Our city is growing, and that's a fact. Seattle is also a climate haven, and as a sanctuary city, we have a responsibility to make it affordable and welcoming for everybody who's going to come here. We can either allow more people to live within our city, or we can contribute to urban sprawl. Urban sprawl will degrade our environment by encroaching upon currently undeveloped or lightly-developed land. Further, increasing density in our city will lower our climate impact. The transportation sector in Washington is responsible for most of our global warming emissions. When people live close to work, social lives, families, et cetera, they're able to walk around, take the bus, take their bike, et cetera, and that reduces driving, which helps us address climate change and livability and affordability all at the same time. We acknowledge that this legislation alone is just one of several essential ways to provide affordable housing needed to deal with our housing crisis in a sustainable way. We urge the city to implement more policies to address the housing crisis specifically geared towards reducing displacement and providing services to our unhoused neighbors who need them the most. The employee hours tax is a good start with that. Seattle needs to allow the population growth that is occurring in a way that reduces climate change and social inequalities. So the Sierra Club supports affordable housing because it helps us fight climate change and because housing is a human right. Every human should have a right to a place to live and access to nature. Single-family zoning in a booming city makes both of those rights something that only wealthy people can have. We support MHA because it will help to address climate change through density and avoid further environmental degradation by reducing urban sprawl.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rennie? Rennie, you're going to be followed by Jesse Simpson, 27A.
Good evening. I'm Rennie. I'm very excited to be here tonight as a resident of Madison Valley in support of mandatory affordable, housing affordability. I grew up in and benefited from low-income housing in a rural shit-town, not unlike the one in the podcast. I used to be ashamed to admit that, but as I've grown older and successful, I've embraced this part of my story. Plus, I'm not the kind of gal who forgets where I come from. My childhood home, even though it was at times tenuous, was critical to my success. My home was not beautiful, it had a distinct low-income aesthetic. It was, however, in a good neighborhood, which meant I went to good schools and had a safe environment to roam, a path to success. The solution to affordable housing is not single-fold. MHA is not perfect. It is a thoughtful, multi-pronged plan backed by solid research to build and raise money for badly-needed affordable housing units. Evicted author Matthew Desmond said, "If poverty persists in America, it is not for lack of resources, it is for lack of will." Here in Seattle, we not only have the resources, we have the will, so let's get to work.
Thank you, Rennie. Jesse, you're going to be followed by Karen Philomen, 27B, and then Peter Larson, 28A.
Hello, I'm Jesse Simpson from the Miller Park Yabres and Capitol Hill Renters Initiative. I'm a native Seattleite and recent college graduate. I'm now renting a micro-studio here in Capitol Hill for $1,275 a month, which I've been told is slightly under the market rate by the corporate leasing office. I'm in favor of MHA, though I recognize that it alone is insufficient to deal with our, to fully address our housing crisis, which has been decades in the making. Our zoning rules have frozen neighborhoods in amber, preventing them from adding the needed housing variety and density to welcome more people into a growing city. As it exists today, our zoning is exclusionary. The status quo is not working for anyone who is faced with the crushing reality of Seattle's current real estate market. Beyond the bounds of our gerrymandered urban villages, single-family zoning dominates the city. The zoning is a classist project created to protect property values and driven by a wrong-headed belief that margins neighborhoods are healthy neighborhoods. It does not protect so-called naturally occurring affordable housing. Our persistent and growing housing shortage merely means that market prices are continually escalating, even for comparatively cheap homes. It's profoundly inequitable that the only thing that can be built across most of this city is unaffordable housing, $2 million, 3,000-square-foot McMansions on 5,000-square-foot lots. Regardless of the money allocated for public housing, it's impossible to build new affordable housing on single-family lots. I fully support accommodating more growth and more affordable housing in our urban villages, but we have to go further and eliminate single-family zoning citywide if we want to live up to our vision as an inclusive place, a city offering refuge from an increasingly unstable and hotter world. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen? Karen?
Hi, my name is Karen Philomen. I'm new to the city, and I'm here to support the MHA. I urge you to make this a starting point for the city to grow in the right direction. I know that I'm one of the big contributors to the property taxes, and I really hope that the property taxes in Seattle will be used not just for things that you guys don't really care about, but for housing, for streets, for transportation, for everything Seattle needs. And I know this is right now a hype, the property taxes is at. So the property taxes will soon become lesser. We all know that, that's a fact, because we will not have that hype forever. And I really, really urge you to use the money that you're getting right now and not try to get money from other places where you should normally not get it from. There are proposed LIDs right now in the downtown area to get even more money from people who have decent property. This is the first place you will start to do an LID, and I think you will actually not get the money from happy people, and these people will not support you in the future. You should try to make happy Seattle people, and people will not vote for you again if you don't support everything with the property tax you already have, and try to get it from other places, and forget the people who don't have housing at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen. Peter Larson? Peter Larson, here comes Peter, 28A, followed by Rachel Ludwig, 28B, and Scott Alspeck, 29A. Peter?
Hello, my name is Peter. I live in District 7, and I am here in support of the upzoning combined with mandatory housing affordability. I'm on the board of Bellwether Housing, which is an affordable, which develops and manages affordable housing. I'm also a long-term Amazonian, and so I've had a front-row seat to the growth that Amazon has had and the changes it's brought to the city, both good and bad. And I've been in product, in new product development for a long time, and so I approach this through, through that lens. And it's, it's a truism in any new product development that the best ideas come from, require in fact, a diversity of ideas. And diversity idea, of ideas come from a diversity of people. And I'm afraid at the, at the current rate, this city and my neighborhood in particular will be populated by people who not only look like me, but more importantly, think like me. And that will not result in the best ideas, and that ultimately will destroy what makes Seattle great in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Rachel? Rachel Ludwig, 28B. How about Scott Alspeck, 29A? Scott, you're going to be followed by Doug Hobkirk, 29B.
Hi, my name's Scott Alspeck. I rent just down the street on Capitol Hill, and I'm here tonight to support the proposed upzones and MHA program. While I support the program for many of the reasons mentioned here tonight, I'm going to focus on the climate crisis in my remarks. As others have mentioned, and multiple studies have shown, people who live in dense, walkable neighborhoods like Capitol Hill and our other urban villages have a much lower carbon footprint than those who live in the suburbs. Unlike other methods of reducing one's carbon footprint, such as eating less meat or implementing a carbon tax, paying more money, Seattle's soaring rents illustrate the demand that people have to live here in these walkable neighborhoods. Our city is contributing to this climate crisis. We are running out of time. The implementing MHA and going further and increasing density even more is really importantly a decision that we can make on our own. Our federal government is doing everything they can to make the climate crisis worse. Our state is paralyzed and inaction, but here in Seattle, we can say yes. We can say yes to affordability, yes to our future neighbors, yes to our children, and yes to doing our part to save our climate. Please say yes. I know all of you really believe in fighting climate change, and keep going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Doug? Doug Hobkirk, 29B. You're going to be followed by Paul Armstead, 30A, and Alice Quintons, 30B.
Hi. Very briefly, I moved on to, we moved on to our block in what was not called Madison-Miller area in 1980. And I lived in Capitol before that even. And really, I'm here just to say I do support Hala. The diversity that we see in that neighborhood needs to be remembered, that part of it is because that neighborhood was on the wrong side of a red line. That made it kind of affordable, and a lot of different people over the years and through the ups and downs of this economy could, were able to move in and live there. So the basic message I would have is that I support Hala, I support these efforts. The toughest nut to crack is getting the funds to provide the support that low-income people need to live in that neighborhood, to not have the economic split where people without the dough, even if they can afford to actually pay rent, are, end up way off in the South End or something like that, you know? And it's a real tough problem, so, tough problem for you guys, lots of challenges. Just keep swinging through it, trying to solve those problems and do it better, you know? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Armstead? Paul, you're going to be followed by Alice Quintons, 30B, and then Nikki Olivier-Hellenkamp, 31A.
Hi, I'm Paul Armstead. I'm a 56-year resident of Seattle. I happen to be an architect who's had some experience building multifamily. I, I truly believe in and support the urban planning principles of what, what the MHA is doing, but I want to challenge you to, in a couple of areas. One is I'm concerned about some of the lower-density zones and the loss of some of the diversity and displacement of, of people in some of the housing that already exists in those areas. And we've heard from some of those today. My son lives in a, in a group home. There's five, five people all living together in a wonderful house, and, you know, that one would just get knocked down, and, and density would be provided there, and it would be very expensive for the next people, and they'd be gone. What I challenge you to do is get some realistic incentives, and some of those are the performance, for instance. What we should do is we should figure out how to expedite permitting and juris, and simplify the jurisdictional approach if somebody is going to put affordable housing into, into a development. Another thing that I would say is that, that there needs to be equitable payments if they're going to buy out of that program. What, what the developers should do, or the, or the homeowners or whoever should do is if, if they're not going to provide what the, what, what we're asking for, what they should do is look at, we should look at what the market rate is of what it costs to build, and have them pay into a fund that can truly build what they're not building for us. And part of that is, is the idea that, you know, it's $300 a square foot now for construction, and, you know, the pittance that they're going to pay is not going to get us very far very fast. So I, I ask you to look, look at those types of things.
Thank you, Paul. Alice? Alice, you're going to be followed by Nikki.
I've lived in the Madison-Miller Park neighborhood for about 40 years, and the last 35 years in a home that I own, a duplex that I own. I strongly support the mandatory housing affordability. I'm very, very concerned about the loss of affordability, both in my neighborhood and in Seattle as a whole. Do I think that MHA is perfect? No. But it is not the cause of unaffordability and displacement. Development is the cause, and the answer is to get some money into affordable housing. In the time that I have lived on my block, I've seen a lot of changes. My block was single-family. It's now low-rise, too. Across the alley are four-story buildings. Have I loved all these changes? No. I have not loved all these changes. But the neighborhood is still wonderful. My neighbors are still wonderful. It is still a great neighborhood.
Thank you, Alice. Nikki? Nikki, you're going to be followed by Dennis Saxman, 31B, and then Justin Allegro, 32A.
Good evening, council members. Thanks so much for being here tonight with all of us. I am Nikki Olivier-Hellenkamp. I'm here with the Housing Development Consortium, Seattle-King County, and HGC stands in strong support of the MHA program as one of the many strategies that our city can and should pursue in order to achieve the vision that everyone should have a safe, healthy, and affordable place to live. Through the MHA program and the associated upzones, we have the opportunity to ensure that growth, the growth that our city is experiencing benefits people of all incomes, which is something that other cities across our region, including some of our friends on the east side and across the country, have had in place for years. So really encourage you to pass these upzones across the city, and thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Dennis? Dennis, you're going to be followed by Justin Allegro, and then Julie McCleary, 32B.
Thanks. I didn't take two cards. I was asked to drop this other prison's card in.
Thanks. I didn't take two cards. I was asked to drop this other prison's card in. Houston, we have a problem. Everybody in this room is concerned about affordability, but somehow we are in the midst of a severe affordability crisis. How did that happen? I've been around a while, lived on the hill 21 years, attended a few council meetings. I've heard so many council members talk about their concern about diversity, inclusivity, affordability. And on that score, of all the people who talk about inclusivity, this audience is predominantly white. There are very few black people here. There are very few Hispanics here. Very few. So I think, you know, what's that say about the outreach? Secondly, as a gay male, I came up here from San Francisco too because it was too expensive, right? And contrary to the young gay man who spoke about, it's such a wonderful place. You know, I lived in San Francisco from 1984 to 1996, the height of the HIV/AIDS epidemic. And I saw a significant portion of my generation die. I have seen the vibrant gay life of Capitol Hill be decimated by the gentrification of this neighborhood. I could probably suffer through a third extinction, but I'm not happy to see it. The problem I have with Hala is that it doesn't go far enough. It creates what, 6,326 units over a 20-year period? That is nothing. You need to look at the Washington State Housing Needs Assessment, which points out that there is a much more massive need than MHA will ever satisfy. And I consider MHA a house of sand.
Thank you Dennis.
Thanks.
Justin? Justin, you're going to be followed by Julie McCleary, 32B.
Thank you. My name is Justin Allegro. I own a single-family home in Upper Queen Anne. I have two kids, both in Seattle Public Schools in Queen Anne, and not a, I'm not a housing developer. And I strongly, strongly support MHA. I've had some conversations with some folks in my Queen Anne neighborhood and some say they want to see affordable housing growth done the right way. And they don't know if this hits the mark for Queen Anne. And when I hear the phrase "affordable growth done the right way," I believe that the members, my community members in Queen Anne are thinking about steering growth to certain areas within neighborhoods, having a citywide master plan, favoring urban villages for growth, and then along the major arterials and secondary arterials. And I think this plan hits that on the mark. The urban village upzones will add to apartment density and that should help somewhat with rental rates in Seattle on the whole as we move forward. And then in my district, you know, 500 acres are zoned as neighborhood multifamily or mid-rise. And this proposal doesn't increase any of that acreage within Upper Queen Anne. All it does is of course add, you know, the opportunity to have taller and more dense structures. So I think that's consistent with what I hear from my neighbors and what they want. And doing so would provide this middle, missing middle housing environment and get some additional diverse housing options closer to downtown. And hopefully more of that types of housing would take the pressure off the rising price of single-family homes as well. Couple of other areas where I've disagreed with some of the assertions from my neighborhood, I've heard here tonight and in other writings of this proposal that 50% of single-family homes would be converted to residential small lot. And when you look at that map and you hear the presentation, that's in the urban villages and it's not in Queen Anne. And I find it misleading when that is said in these settings into our community in Queen Anne. Additionally, they say, "We need neighborhood input and you're not listening to neighborhood plans." Now, I've looked at the 1997 neighborhood plan for Queen Anne and that says, you know, opposes the Upper Queen Anne Avenue urban village designation. So I just don't have a lot of confidence that we'll get there that way. So thank you for hearing me and people in Upper Queen Anne support the proposal.
Thank you Justin. Julie? Julie, you're going to be followed by 33A Brad Augustine and 33B Andrew Tsang.
Okay. Hi, my name is Julie McCleary and I'm a proponent of density and affordable housing. But I don't support the legislation as it's currently designed for many of the reasons that were discussed this evening, mostly because it doesn't go far enough. But the thing I'd like to discuss is, one of the reasons that I think MHA hasn't gotten closer to its potential is because of divisive rhetoric. Specifically rhetoric that vilifies all single-family homeowners. While tonight's comments have been respectful, I've been at other hearings and certainly in online forums that's used language like greedy, Grinches, elitist, the ubiquitous, NIMBY, and worse. The problem is that while some single-family homeowners might fit this bill, actually many of those single-family homeowners in upzone areas in my neighborhood in particularly, actually are at high risk of displacement. So it's a different group than what's being vilified. My neighbor Amy is a great example. She's a single mother of four children, one of whom has Down Syndrome. Amy chose her house a decade ago specifically so her daughter could have a home to grow up in and transition into as an adult, which would make that transition to self-sufficiency much easier. Increased property taxes and the upzoning threaten her and her kids to have to leave the neighborhood. So when we paint all single-family homeowners with the same broad brush of vilification with claims of greed and elitism, we sort of miss the mark. And we also miss the opportunity to have more productive dialogue with all of the citizens who love and want to stay in Seattle. And if Seattle really is for everyone, it is for Amy and her daughter, as well as those who are in single-family homes now, who are in circumstances where they might be displaced and where they fear MHA. I ask the council to just, I encourage you to ensure that the political rhetoric around MHA is more inclusive and more nuanced. And I think that that will help the conversation.
Thank you Julie. Brad Augustine, 33A Brad Augustine. Brad, you're going to be followed by 33B Andrew Tsang and then 34A Denise Tur.
I'm actually here on behalf of Pike Pine Urban Neighborhood Council, P-PUNK. Thank you council members and staff for your time. I know it's a lot of work and we really appreciate all you do. I also want to thank the city for working with neighborhood stakeholders to make sure that the Pike Pine Conservation Overlay can continue to preserve character buildings and structures, along with the mandatory housing affordability upzone. The overlay is a valuable tool for preserving the unique design and character of the Pike Pine neighborhood, even as we take on new growth. P-PUNK, which is the acronym for Pike Pine Urban Neighborhood, supports the increased FAR incentives for preservation proposed in the current upzone legislation. P-PUNK supports the companion legislation that changes the building code to allow wood structures over concrete up to 85 feet in our neighborhood. We believe that combining these two changes will allow the overlay to continue to function well and to preserve quality, old, character structures while also embracing growth. Thank you.
Thank you Brad. Andrew? Not seeing Andrew Tsang. How about Denise Tur? Denise? I'm not seeing Denise. How about, oh?
Denise needs to get her glasses, so she asked if I'd go first. I'm happy Henry.
Okay.
I thank you for working overtime. How do you stay awake at meeting after meeting like this? Anyway, I did not drive a horse and buggy here, nor do I want to ask for hitching posts. I am fortunate to own five single-family zoned lots. They're grandfathered in as triplexes or duplexes. And every one of them has a view of mountains and the Puget Sound. They're beautiful. And I rent them out for $400 to $700 per bedroom per month. And nobody moves out. I would like to have more of places like this around Seattle, because there's a lot of need for students, people like my children, who can't seem to hold and keep a job, that need to have that kind of housing. I would like to see them be able to pay $3,000 a month, but it's just not happening yet. So I've got flaws, just like MAAH or mandatory affordable housing. But I have come to learn that I can, I have come here to learn what can I do with what I have. I want to find out, because I'm new at this. I've only come to two of these meetings and that's because I retired. So I'm here to listen, to think, to talk, and encourage people to talk more with each other in the city and between city departments. I can't get increased density in my building. I have 4,400 square feet looking over Ivors. I have one person living in there. It's been that way for the last 30 years because it doesn't have a parking place in the house. And I refuse to build, put in two parking places inside the house. I don't want cars in my house. I'm building anyway. And when the zones change to allow me to get a permit for it, then I'll have it. But I'm building for it. Thanks.
Thank you. Denise? Hold on for a second Denise. You're going to be followed by Kristine Gunther and then Matt Atkins, 35A and 35B.
Thank you. Whose vision of Seattle are we building? The vision of real estate funds that now advertise 9% returns? The vision of $2 billion worth of global capital invested in Seattle since 2015? The vision of only the physically fit and the well-paid? The vision of Seattle should be built by its neighborhoods. The MHA as written and funded would make the negative impacts of our city's rapid growth worse. Today, under existing growth plans, regular folks are suffering. Students evicted, retirees displaced, and hope of homeownership lost. So what does the MH plan do? It would accelerate and incentivize these negative impacts of growth in order to build a few rent-restricted buildings on cheaper land somewhere else. City council claims to care about people, but where is the authentic compassion for their constituents, whose pain is being rationalized, discounted, or completely ignored?
Mr. Chair, again about impugning the motives, I think that everybody's been super respectful, so I just want to continue with that theme.
I'm sorry, what is it?
Ms. Tur, please continue.
Okay.
Thank you.
I disagree. Okay, so how else can you explain why Councilmember Bagshaw has not taken the time to discuss the impacts of 22,500 new housing units and 49,000 new jobs expected within three miles of her Upper Queen Anne neighborhood? I see she's not here now. With growth and density comes destruction and displacement. And it is the job of our government to first do no harm. The city council must support the rights of residents to moderate the pace of growth, consider each place uniquely, and engage all people in neighborhood urban planning. The history of a city must be written by its people, a history that evolves as a human pace. It should not be summarized and edited by the narrow vision of a few. The solutions reside in neighborhood-led urban planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristine, followed by Matt Atkins and then 36A Frank Faye.
Thanks for staying awake, guys. Really appreciate it. I look at this and what's to not like in theory, but it's kind of like ST1. Let's see if we can build a train to the airport after decades of fighting and manipulation and all of that, oftentimes by greedy business owners, which is kind of similar to some of the stuff that nobody seems to really be saying, one person, the monetization of building housing. We should be at ST3 for this? So 6,000 units? If I lived in Bellingham, I would think that was impressive. In a city where 10,000 to 20,000 people are moving here every year, it is beyond a joke. I'll save the expletives, but you can imagine them. It's a joke. And I can sit here and complain, but I can also talk about solutions. There are a lot of, increasingly, there are less, but there are a lot of guys out there and women, like Henry, who are doing the right thing. Do they get a tax break? Is there any kind of grandfather clause for almost every friend of mine who can still afford to live on the hill? By the way, I'm one of those artists who, I work a day job all the time now. I barely make art. And almost everyone I made art with, the last project I worked on, they've either left or they've gone to work in the corporate world because they can't afford it anymore. So the question becomes, why is it that our landlords are all telling us, "You know, I would keep your rent even lower, but they keep dinging me and I can't do anything. My costs are going up. I've got to raise your rent." And as they get older, they hire apartment managers. And in my case, I'm looking at a $400 rent increase starting next month. So we can sit here and say, "Oh, we need to build housing," but that doesn't mean anything. Of course, there are rich people out there that want to build us rich housing, tell us that it's not costing them, that it's costing them a lot of money and they're hardly making any money. But the world does not come here, Korea, Japan, Canada, to build housing because they're doing us a favor. Mike McGinn stood here eight years ago, a couple blocks away, and said, "We just need to build more housing." No. Where you have a post office that's being knocked down two feet from a subway station, maybe you need to build a little bit taller there and you can leave some of those historic buildings on the other side of the hill. You got to get the planning together because it's not there. It's this overlay. I know I'm out of time, but I need 10 seconds. It's this overlay approach that is killing it. But that's great. This overlay approach is killing it. It needs to be more specific and more thought out.
Matt Atkins?
Matt Atkins, you're going to be followed by Frank Faye and then David Ward.
Hello, my name is Matt Atkins and I live in District 7 and I support the MHA. I think it's a way to moderately upzone already dense areas, particularly in District 7, in order to receive financing for future affordable housing. I do wish there was more inclusionary zoning as many others have spoken today. And I think that would make our neighborhoods and city more diverse. I would like to talk about the Washington State Condo Act. I really encourage the city of Seattle to talk with the state to review the Washington State Condo Act so that more condos could be built in the city to provide more homeownership opportunities to first-time buyers. Representative Cindy Ryu in the 32nd Legislative District in Shoreline is a particularly strong voice in the legislature. And I hope that the city would add this item to their legislative agenda next year. Thank you.
Thank you Matt. Frank? Frank, are you still here? Not seeing Frank. David? David, you're going to be followed by 37A Mark Brunson.
Hello, I'm David Ward. I'm the president of Scale, the Seattle Coalition for Affordability, Livability, and Equity. I'd just like to say, we can do better. MHA could provide far more affordable housing than it does. 5% to 7% means only 1 out of 15 to 1 out of 20 people can get somewhat affordable housing. That's much too little. We can require one-for-one replacement. So otherwise, we lose far more naturally affordable housing than we gain through MHA. It's essential also to put in clawback in the legislation. Otherwise, we won't have any affordable housing if developers sue. So that would get rid of everything. And developers simply make more profits that way with the upzones. I think we need to greatly increase the in-lu fees. The in-lu, having very low in-lu fees, lower than any place else, makes it so that they will only do the in-lu fees and the in-lu fees do not provide enough money to provide housing in other places. So there's very little that's going to be built in the neighborhoods, which is where it should be built. Otherwise, you're segregating people out in the wider areas. And also, use the full range of solutions in the Solutions to Seattle's, Seattle's, Solutions to Seattle's Housing Emergency Report. Because we can build a lot more affordable housing that way and we don't necessarily have to have the upzones. I think there were 52 solutions in there and none of them required upzones. And those upzones are what give a lot of benefits to the developers, but very little benefits to the public. Thank you.
Thank you David. Mark Brunson? Mark, 37A, followed by Karen Galen, 37B?
Hi, my name is Mark Brunson. I've been a renter in Capitol Hill for nearly six years. I originally chose this neighborhood primarily because of the excellent transit access and the amount of local businesses to which I can walk. Seattle offers very few neighborhoods in which living car-free is not a burden. This restricts the housing available for someone like me, who has no need for a car and wants to reduce their carbon emissions. More importantly, it restricts housing available for people and families for whom owning and maintaining a car is a major expense. How many people have we pushed outside our borders and forced to either buy a car or spend hours on transit that they could be spending with their families? Our region has spent billions of dollars making Capitol Hill one of those most transit-accessible places in the region. And yet, we waste this investment by restricting how many people can live near it. We need to connect our entire city with efficient modes of transportation and build enough housing so that it is affordable for people of all incomes. The MHA policy could not possibly solve all of our housing issues on its own, but it is one small positive step that we have in front of us. is one small positive step that we have in front of us to take, and I strongly urge you to pass the citywide upzones and mandatory housing affordability requirements. The day after you pass it, I expect you to get to work solving our housing shortages and inequities through further upzones, city-financed construction of deeply affordable housing, and the reversal of exclusionary single-family zoning that was designed to segregate our city. It is unconscionable that we claim to be such an accepting and welcoming city, but we are unwilling to rid ourselves of an inequitable housing policy. It is long past time to make Seattle accessible to anyone, and we won't accomplish that by trading the city as a museum for the wealthy. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Karen? Karen, you're going to be followed by Peter Miller, 38A.
Thank you for sticking around to listen to us. My name is Karen Gillan, and I'm a lifelong resident of Seattle. I gave up my single-family home to move downtown to live in a smaller place, a more densely area where I could walk and give up my car. Unfortunately, the mandatory housing affordability legislation is a wasted effort if the City Council passes laws that decrease the affordability of existing houses. Downtown is already operating under this program, but now you are planning to impose a local improvement district on properties in downtown Seattle to fund the waterfront for all. You are asking less than 2% of all Seattle commercial enterprises and households to fund $200 million of improvements that are not designed for the downtown residential community, but are designed to increase access between waterfront and the downtown retail core for Seattle visitors and tourists. Downtown has a vibrant residential community, which will be greatly impacted by this new approach. They either have to move or die. There's no chance for them to do anything else. Contrary to popular belief, not all people who live downtown are super rich. I am retired and am struggling on how I can continue to pay a property taxes which have risen 75% in five years. I expected to spend my entire retirement in downtown Seattle, and now I'm faced with having to move from the city that I love and that I've supported for all my life. So also, it will force out renters, because their landlords will pass this cost on to them. Also affected, of course, will be the local businesses that serve local people, because they will no longer be able to afford to work there, and we will end up with a downtown that is bereft of any soul. It will be only far-flung investors and will become like the Embarcadero in San Francisco, where it's a big playground. So I urge you to be careful.
Thank you, Karen. Before we get to Peter Miller, Karen, you're the first person to bring up the local improvement district downtown, at least that I'm aware of. There are some specific rules that regulate the local improvement districts. If there are other folks that are planning to bring up local improvement districts, you're, this isn't necessarily the place you can talk about it. You are welcome to talk about it, but we are prohibited from hearing how it will individually affect you financially. So if you're going to talk about it in the way that Karen just did, that's fine, but if you tell us how much you're going to pay as a result of that, that violates some requirements for how we're allowed to take information on that topic. So sorry to get weird and quasi-judicial on you, but that's one of those instances where we are prohibited from hearing those specifics. So now that I've had a moment to pretend to be a lawyer, I will now ask Peter Miller, if you are still here, to come forward. And if, Peter, you're not here, we'll move on to Josh Feit, 38B. Josh, you're here. Alex Hudson, 39A, you're next.
Thank you, guys, for being in the neighborhood tonight. My name is Josh Feit. I live in Miller Park. I'm a member of the Miller Park Yabers, pro-housing community group on East Capitol Hill. The Miller Park Yabers support pro-housing policies like mandatory housing affordability, and we believe the best way to change Seattle's status quo, a status quo that currently prices low- and middle-income people out of the city, is to change our restrictive zoning laws. Excuse me. Seattle's inflexible rules are preventing us from building the diverse housing stock we need citywide to ensure that everyone who wants to live here can afford to do so. Unless every neighborhood lays out the welcome mat and challenges the rules that are preventing people from moving in next door, Seattle is going to remain the gentrified exclusionary city it has become under existing code. Please pass the citywide upzone so that more people have access to transit-rich, park-centric, beautiful Seattle neighborhoods like Miller Park. Combining a government mandate that makes developers create affordable housing with a market solution that allows more housing is a type of creative policy that will make Seattle an exemplary American city. It's time to stop maintaining walls and start building housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Alex, you're going to be followed by Audrey West.
My name is Alex Hudson, and I have the privilege and honor of being the executive director of the First Hill Improvement Association. We want to start by thanking your council members for your time and leadership on this important issue. First Hill is the densest residential neighborhood north of San Francisco and west of Denver, currently home to the only Seattle neighborhood with the high-rise residential zoning. We have 10,000 neighbors in our 2.5-square-mile neighborhood, and that number is growing by 71% in the next five years due to rapid redevelopment, due to the high cost of land and opportunity in our neighborhood. I hope you'll recognize FIA as the voice of First Hill and as strong proponents and advocates for affordable housing. We've come before you multiple times to advance policies that ensure that the investments that have been made in our transit-oriented neighborhood are accessible to all people who want to work there and have access to the opportunities that our employment center provides. The elimination of incentive zoning on First Hill removes some policies that are working quite well for us. First Hill is short of public open space by the city's own standards by 4.5 acres and are going to have an incredibly difficult time competing with development costs to ensure that we have an adequate and equitable access for our 18% of people who live at or below the federal poverty line in our neighborhood, which is far higher than anywhere else in the city, combined with the single-largest gap in a residential zone for parks and public open space. This incentive zoning program has been able to deliver 25,000 square feet of open space, and we look forward to finding ways to ensure that that program continues to meet our community's needs. In addition, I'll mention that the transfer development programs creates revenue options, which incentivize and displace displacement by protecting naturally affordable housing faster than we can build and keeps what makes our neighborhood special. So we thank you for your time and look forward to staying in with this process.
Thank you, Alex. Audrey West, 39B. Audrey, are you still here? How about Bill Bradbird, your group, 40A? Bill, you've got several folks coming down with you, so you'll get the five-minute group time. You're going to be followed by Janet Woodward, 40.
Council. Sam's a couple who had to leave earlier. Jackson Place is a community of about 700 homes in the 23rd Avenue Urban Village. Our neighborhood is a mix of zoning from single-family to neighborhood commercial 65. In the 2000 census, our community was about 30% area median income and 70% people of color. That demographic has changed dramatically since then, and this current tech-sector-fueled building boom, our community is changing at an alarming rate with long-term residents and people of color leaving, and their homes replaced with townhouses that are now selling for $700,000 and more. Jackson Place has always prided itself in its affordability. Our community council has worked to create the conditions that allowed the development of hundreds of affordable units in the last two decades by housing developers like HomeSite, ArtSpace Projects, and the Central Area Development Authority, CATA. We understand growth and change. We have embraced it, and we understand affordable housing. Some of us, some of our board members are renters in affordable units or own low-income units. Under the MHA proposal, our neighborhood, like every neighborhood in our urban village, is having every parcel upzoned. We hope that you can understand that under MHA, that all zones are receiving greater development capacity. That is an upzone. So even though maps at OPCD shows the public retain, that shows the public retain current zone names, those areas have also been effectively upzoned. So the city, under the auspices of the grand bargain, have deemed that zoning every parcel in the 23rd Avenue Urban Village is the way to provide affordable housing. But many of us believe that this will only cause more displacement and further tearing at the fabric of our community as developers seek to buy out homeowners and replace homes with two or more expensive townhouses, a pattern that we are already seeing today and that will expand further under MHA. We implore council to look at the fallacy of MHA. The city, in its environmental impact statement, states that MHA will deliver a mere 258 affordable homes in 20 years to 23rd Avenue Urban Village. Yet every parcel is upzoned, increasing the likelihood of displacement, particularly for the 975 single-family homes that are being upzoned in the urban village, like Ruby's over here. Hundreds of single-family homes around Garfield High School, the heart of the central district, and almost 200 homes in our neighborhood, Jackson Place, are targeted by this proposal. The city has identified our communities in the central areas having a high risk of displacement, and that our neighborhoods are well below the average income for the city. This information can be found in the city's EIS. Yet that same EIS states that in 20 years, MHA will deliver 258 affordable units. That is, on average, only 20 affordable units per year for the whole urban village. Let me, let's say that again so it sinks in. 258 affordable units in 20 years for our urban village. This proposal updates thousands of parcels, yet delivers a pittance of affordability to a community that has been gentrifying at an alarming rate. Yet because Mayor Murray struck a deal with developers that indiscriminately upzones all parcels without real planning, nor without adequately assessing the displacement impacts, our communities are going to be faced with another wave of development that will remove trees, block light, add to traffic, parking lots, and replace older homes with bigger, more expensive townhouses. Developers will pay a small fee to do all of that, as if this is the solution to our affordability needs. The other narrative you've heard tonight talks about producing more housing to stop sprawl, produce walkable communities, and other points promulgated by Seattle for Everyone, which is funded by a million dollars from Vulcan and Facebook and the nonprofit housing industry that is excited by all the money that this will be thrown at them. They say the choice is do this or do nothing. But our narrative is the real story of residents and reflects the damage MHA will do to the central district and to the low-income communities that have called this part of Seattle home for generations. Jackson Place does not want to be zoned as a neighborhood of low-density, expensive townhouses. With smarter zoning and planning, we can produce far more affordable units and displace less residents of our neighborhood. We want onsite affordability. Don't believe the hype. Read the EIS yourselves. We have, and we are part of a coalition of neighborhoods that have appealed it. MHA is a sham, and Seattle can do better. Reject the current MHA.
I'm Rebecca Adrian, and as a board member with Bill and as a low-income childcare worker, I want to say that I squeaked in to my low-income, low-mortgage unit, and I would not be able to afford it under the current conditions that are going to be set forward, because we're not talking about one-to-one replacement. I squeaked in at the very end of my breakup with my ex, and I was able to form one of the last low-income units in my building, and those are not going to be possible anymore. I am getting downsized. There are people making $15 wage that are 24, and I'm double that, and I will not be able to afford to retire here either.
Thank you all. Janet Woodward? Janet Woodward, 40B? Janet, are you still here? How about Jim Erickson, 41A? Jim?
I'm Jim Erickson, speaking for the First Hill Improvement Association, where I chair the Urban Design and Public Space Committee. We're concerned that what you're considering is going to stop a very healthy process, and we're asking you to reconsider. First Hill has one of Seattle's most significant gaps in access to public open space. For nearly two decades, $5 million in funds have been earmarked for the acquisition of land, but the city has not been able to afford it. The First Hill Public Realm Action Plan, which we coordinated with S.SPR and OPCD, is establishing expectations for street design along the First Hill Green Streets. Private development is encouraged to implement these concepts as part of their incentive zoning and other requirements. Under the existing incentive zoning program, developers in high-rise zones on First Hill may achieve all their extra-floor area by contributing to affordable housing. However, they also have the option of achieving up to 40% of their extra-floor area by providing public open space, implementing a green street improvement, or purchasing transferable development potential, TDP, from historic landmark sites. In the current legislation being considered by the City Council, the option to meet the incentive zoning requirements will be eliminated. Please reconsider this. We've got a working process, and we're gaining open space, and you're telling us to stop the cooperation that you've had with the city and don't get more money from developers. Please allow it as an option. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Patience Malaba, 41B, is next, followed by Angela Compton, 42A. And thanks, folks, for hanging in with us. If everybody who signed up is still here, we've got about 40 minutes left to go. Patience.
Good evening, council members. My name is Patience Malaba, and I am here speaking on behalf of Seattle for Everyone. We are a broad coalition of organizations that work on social justice, affordable housing developers, for private developers, and we are all united, supporting the mandatory housing affordability citywide legislation. Seattle's pressing need for affordable housing is well documented and known to all of us, and affordable housing is further out of reach for certain populations, and meeting affordable housing needs should be incognizant of our population growth and requires that we build more homes. The proposed legislation will increase overall housing production to help meet continuing high demand and will leverage private development to create income-and-rent restricted affordable housing for low-income and working people in areas that have higher access to transit and therefore enabling people to live and work in the same city. We therefore stand behind the legislation's effort to amend the Seattle's land use and zoning code, to apply MHA requirements in existing multifamily and commercial zones, areas currently zoned single-family in existing urban villages, and areas zoned single-family in urban village expansion areas. Inaction will not help us. It will not help the current housing shortage that we are faced with. MHA requirements will not apply unless and until we adopt this legislation. We thank you for your leadership towards adopting this legislation, and we urge you to go forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Patience. Angela Compton? Angela, you're going to be followed by Ryan Dacey, 42B?
I'm too short for this. I'm going to pull it back and stand on this step. Good evening, council. My name is Angela Compton. I am here today to give support for the proposed rezones to enact mandatory housing affordability. I'm here on behalf of Futurewise. We're a statewide organization that focuses on preserving our green space and farmland by curbing sprawl and making our cities livable for everyone. We are a part of the Seattle for Everyone Coalition that is working to ensure we have homes in our city for our neighbors across the income spectrum. Currently, we don't have enough homes for all of our neighbors, and every day we hear about more and more of our neighbors dealing with housing instability. As I've told you guys before, housing and homelessness is an issue that will always be close to my heart. As a child, growing up in Seattle, housing was an issue my family struggled with. There were times we had no home and times we were tripled up in a family member's room. But when my family finally did have housing, my mom was still paying over half her income on rent. This is not, and now we're here 20 years later, and our housing shortage has gotten worse. I've seen the struggle for neighbors to find homes they can afford over and over again. Through college and immediately after, I worked as a housing navigator here in Seattle's homeless shelters. And while we were able to find some of our unhoused neighbors, find homes, this was often only after they had struggled for months and applied to dozens of apartments. This is not a reality I want families in Seattle to be facing. We know that people are happier when they are able to live close to jobs, schools, parks, and other amenities, but in Seattle, our restrictive zoning laws have added to the inequitable access to resources, especially for lower-income and more diverse communities. By passing this program, we can help to mitigate our housing shortage by ensuring that we're reserving homes in our opportunity-rich areas for lower-income neighbors. This is something we haven't been doing. If we enacted this program 20 years ago, we might not be in the housing shortage we're in today. I really would like you guys to consider other options, other ways to make our housing affordability crisis, and there's lots of ways you can do this, and I think a big one is after you enact this part of mandatory housing affordability, is to look at the rest of the city and to think about putting more homes there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan? Ryan, you're going to be followed by Greg Blunt, 43A, and Andrew Kirsch, 43B.
Hey, I'm Ryan Darcy. I'm a renter in Capitol Hill and a local business owner just up the street on Broadway, and also representative for the Save the Roy View campaign. Just under two weeks ago, the residents at Roy View learned that our building is in the process of being sold to a group of relatively new developers in Seattle called the New Apartments. This group is flaunting their plan to gut our building, which currently hosts 34 healthy, sustainable, one- and two-bedroom apartments while replacing it with 147 microhousing units. This new development is being bailed- This new development is being billed as an affordable housing option for our neighborhood. When you crunch the numbers, this claim is just categorically untrue, and the cash grab is a quintessential example of predatory development that will destroy this community if we don't put some controls in place. A New Apartments will sell this project by telling you that many of these units will be renting for half the price of what we're currently paying at the Roy View. However, if we look at similar projects from a New Apartments in our neighborhood, they'll be renting for three times as much per square foot. The cost of living is clearly going up when you break down the price per person that these units can afford. In some places, micro housing may make sense, but it must be priced accordingly and regulated. Affordable long-term apartment living in the city is a critical requirement if we want to foster a diverse population and retain residents that will pay into and enjoy the social and city programs that encourage them to stay here. Ultimately, we cannot allow ourselves to be fooled by developers like a New Apartments who are peddling a raisin for half the price of an apple. We need to factor in how much these new units can support and how much they progress the healthy development of our community. 180-square-feet units, the size of dorm rooms, may support transient residents with temporary housing needs, but they are not a sustainable solution to the housing affordability and availability crisis. Allowing a New Apartments to move forward with development like this at the cost of the destruction of the Roy View is pushing our community even further into a housing market with less and less options to raise a family. Forcing residents at the Roy View out of their homes will only serve to crowd the already shrinking market of sustainable, multi-person homes even more. We should preserve these spaces, or at the very least, demand that any redevelopment continue to support at least as many families as they currently do.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks.
Greg? Greg, you're going to be followed by Andrew Kirsch, and then Dan Harder.
My name is Greg Blunt, and I was born and raised in Seattle. The point I wanted to make is that it's my understanding that the Judkins Station does not have a station overlay district associated with it. Every light rail station in Seattle, except for Judkins Station, has a station overlay associated with the transit node that includes relaxed parking restrictions, opportunities to create more pedestrian environments, promotion of transit-oriented development, walking, pedestrian kind of stuff. And the Judkins Station doesn't have that. In fact, the Judkins Station is being, it's, most of the neighborhoods that were single-family are being upzoned to LR1. Some are LR2, which I think is appropriate. I kind of wish it was a little bit denser, especially along the station. The length of the station goes between Rainier and 23rd. And my thought is that near that station is an opportunity for larger buildings that just isn't being provided. There's, and the station itself is on the line between two urban villages. But when that station opens in 2022, there's going to be hundreds of people being disgorged from the trains, a pad with no place to go. And the planning doesn't allow for there to be any place built by then or at any time in the future. There's no commercial, there's no mixed use. It's characterized by the busy roads and the townhouse development that's being done in the area, and I think it's a shame and a waste and a missed opportunity. I think it's not a line between two urban villages, it's a node, it's a new urban village. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Kirsch? Andrew, 43B, you're going to be followed by Dan Harder, 44A.
Thanks. I'm going to talk about tree preservation. I've lived on Capitol Hill since about 1987. I've never owned a car. I've been a tree-protection activist for much of that time, and half of this is a renter, now a co-op resident. So Seattle has a goal of increasing its tree canopy. Much of Capitol Hill is zoned low-rise 3. The MHA claims that upzoning will cause negligible impact on tree canopy and that low-rise zones and structures have similar canopy coverage as single-family zones. This is based on false assumptions. For Capitol Hill, the major ones are, first, a major part of the low-rise zone's canopy on some blocks, 50 to 90%, is located on those parcels that still have single-family houses and greater, in some cases, much greater than 25% canopy. These houses and trees are what is destroyed for new low-rise structures. Second, MHA assumes the tree canopy associated with new low-rise development will be similar to canopy associated with existing low-rise structures. This is false because many older low-rise structures on the hill have setbacks and are courtyards that provide significant tree canopy. Code changes driven by developers now allow buildings that I like to call Sally Clark's with nearly lot-line-to-lot-line coverage and no space for significant replacement canopy. An analysis that I did of nearly 300 parcels in the low-rise zone of all kinds of different present uses found that parking lots are currently providing 40% more canopy than townhouses. Without code changes protecting existing trees and mandating space onsite for replacement trees, the proposed upzones will only incentivize and accelerate permanent loss of tree canopy. I was on the Neighborhood Plan Stewardship Council when we wrote the existing neighborhood guidelines, design guidelines. Earlier, Ms. Daffern complained of a lack of inclusivity in the MHA process, but she's currently heading a working group on rewriting the neighborhood design guidelines to support Hala. While their affiliations were not listed on the boards for an open house, nearly every member of her group is associated with a developer. This is far different from the Neighborhood Plan Stewardship Council that wrote the current guidelines, which, in my view, don't need to be changed.
Thank you.
And is it another example of the regulatory capture of SDCA and DON?
Thank you, Andrew. Dan Harder, are you still here? Dan, I don't see you coming forward. How about Joyce Halderson, 44B? Okay. Jonathan Mark, 45A? Oh, Jonathan, it looks like you're here. Come on, Dan, Jonathan. Suzanne Hitman, 45B, you're next.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Mark. I've lived in District 3 for 20 years. I'll be quick. I've been just speaking in favor of the MHA. I only, I only think it doesn't go far enough, and we need to do much more for equity. We need to allow small apartment buildings in all residential land the way it was once allowed. Need to build higher near the transit, near the transit investments, and we need to raise progressive income for shelter and housing, specifically the employee hours tax and the whole 150 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Suzanne?
Yes, my name is Suzanne Hitman, a First Hill resident, and I support rezoning to facilitate construction of affordable housing, but it is way too slow, my friends. We have been active in our neighborhood, and we advocate for and say yes in our backyard. We have Plymouth Housing. We have the new Compass 24-Hour Shelter. We house persons who have recently removed, been coming out of prison. We have methadone clinics. We are the neighborhood that is thriving and trying to help with the homeless. We also are the neighborhood that had one single-family home, and that was sold. So we now are a neighborhood with no single-family homes. I don't know if that's worthy of applause or worthy of a tear. But there are two essential items which must be maintained in the measure that you are considering. We have the deficit in open space, which you have heard about on First Hill. The $5-million bond measure that passed a number of years ago. Your park department could never find a piece of property that that could purchase and serve as a park. $5 million today would probably buy us two inches, and we don't want a two-inch park. So we have developed with city departments, and you approved our Public Realm Action Plan. This identifies green streets and other provisions, as you've heard. But your current proposal eliminates incentive zoning for open space, green streets, and landmark preservation. And in the First Hill neighborhood, we have approximately 15 landmark sites. And I urge you to incorporate incentive zoning with mandatory housing availability. This will increase affordable housing at some time in the future while retaining the potential for open space.
Thank you, Suzanne.
And I'm going to take another two minutes. I'm sorry, but at 87, I deserve it, and I've lived in Seattle all my life. You have got to do something about housing now. Harborview Hall is sitting there empty, and it's been empty for eight to 10 years. You've got to work with the county to try to get some rehab in there for shelter. You also told us two years ago that there was going to be a safe injection site in Seattle. It's not displaced yet. When? How many more calls do medic have to make to try to revive somebody? My friends, you have a lot of problems, but there are a lot of solutions. And money isn't the answer to everything. Some of it takes your compassion, and the compassion of many other people.
Thank you, Suzanne. James Chesko. That's a tough act to follow, James. I wish you luck. 46A. And then Ross Baker, 46B.
Hi, I'm James Chesko. I'm a resident of Madison Valley. I've lived in Seattle for about 10 years, both as a renter and now as a homeowner. I would like to share with you just a story of, I never wished I would have ever had to experience, but a reality that will probably be retold too many times when eager developers invade communities with the goal of their profits. My personal friend and neighbor Dennis, who was working two jobs, both as a carpenter and a day cook, by night, goal to buy a 900-square-foot crassman he was renting in Madison Valley. The owner said it was time to cash out. He couldn't compete for the developer's deep pockets. He was kicked out, moved to Everett for a couple of months, couldn't take the commute, and now he's gone. Meantime, before even acquiring the property, the developer dispatched their army of surveyors, architects, construction managers, many of which trespass on our neighboring properties before they'd even purchased the land, formulated their plan to destroy the 2,000-square-foot orchard of trees, petitioned SDOT to even remove all the right-of-way public trees on the street in front of them, excavated over 1,000 cubic yards of soil and constructed a four-story modular monstrosity over 50-foot-long, over 40 feet high from the front curb, and up to the three feet from the edges of the side yards. Then came six months of silence and neglect, and grasses and weeds grew two to three feet high. The property became an eyesore, blighted eyesore, where the rat population exploded, and they started spreading due to all the fallen fruit from the trees. After six weeks of engaged contact with the Board of Public Health, we finally got them to do a little bit for a week or two to trap some of the rats, but then they continued on demolition, basically spread them to their surrounding properties. We found out later that it's completely acceptable for the development site to look, and I quote, "like a garbage dump," is what the SDCA, littered with unfinished foods, beverages, wrappers, debris, garbage, onsite, anywhere they wanted to put. Rettentious McMansion was built that would likely have run afoul of environmental protections and zoning laws, but the developer initially claimed he would only build a two-story, 30x35-foot home, which the geotechnical review was based upon. Once it passed through a few stages of the review and approval, it suddenly changed and grew into a monstrosity that neither matches the bulk height and scale of our neighborhood and character, nor conforms to zoning laws, nor is built per plan.
Thank you, James. Thank you. Ross Baker? You're going to be followed by Mary Pat Deleva, and then Sean Waite.
Hi, council members. My name is Ross Baker. I'm the Public Policy Director for Virginia Mason Medical Center on First Hill. Virginia Mason's worked with city staff, First Hill Improvement Association, First Hill Landowners, to support the proposal that is coming for you to preserve incentive zoning in the MHA rezone. Suzanne talked about it, Alex talked about it earlier, as did Jim Erickson. Virginia Mason has a landmark property, the Baroness Hotel, located between Spring and Madison Streets and Ontario Avenue, between Terry and Boron. Want to say today, as a lifelong resident of Seattle, I won't say how old because I'm younger, I'm older than I look, and working for an institution that's 100 years old, that the issue's not whether we need both affordable housing or landmark preservation. The issue is, we can preserve landmark preservation and build affordable housing. On First Hill, you have a unique opportunity to retain the incentive housing, so that structures like Stimson Green Mansion, which has open and green space, Trinity Church, which is a beautiful old building, which also has green space used by people on First Hill, you can retain both open space, green space, and historic buildings that retain culture and a sense of what Seattle has been in the past as we move forward. You can both build, create housing, and retain landmark buildings. If you retain the incentive zoning, it will allow us to use transfer of development rights to put money into preserving our historic landmark building, as well as other First Hill property owners will also be able to do so, and also to create housing. So again, let's preserve landmarks, let's create more open space, and create housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ross. Mary Pat?
Hi, I'm Mary Pat Deleva. I'm an almost-50-year resident between the CD and Capitol Hill, now in the CD. Seniors, people of color, students, and other low-income residents of our city already living in affordable and naturally existing low-income housing are the collateral damage of the MHA zoning changes. In the name of low-income housing, which we all want and support, existing affordable and naturally occurring low-income housing is being destroyed to make way for density development, creating ever more displacement. People like myself, who bought their homes and condos years ago when they truly were affordable to the average wage earner, are being property taxed out of our homes to make way for density development, creating ever more displacement. So what are we giving in exchange for throwing seniors, people of color, students, and other low-income residents under the bus besides 800,000 and 900,000 townhouses and rowhouses? That's what they're going for across the street from me, in my affordable house. Not much, it turns out. The city has been absolutely Trumpian in their efforts to support the 1% using MHA, and in the misleading way their housing numbers are presented. The materials say we'll get 20,000 units of low-income housing, but 14,000 of those units have nothing to do with MHA. The city's own final environmental impact statement for MHA says we'll get 57, 53 units of low-income housing. Seriously? It feels like that many people, if not more, are being forced out of their homes, just like I potentially will be. MHA is an unmitigated disaster. It doesn't give us the promised benefits, and is creating havoc for seniors, people of color, students, low-income residents, and their neighbors. It's time to admit error and go back to the drawing board and to include those same seniors, people of color, students, and low-income residents in the planning, which has not happened so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Pat. Sean, are you still here? Sean Waite? Sean would have been followed by Andrew Taylor. Andrew, are you still here? 49A. How about Glenn Bullman, 48B? Glenn's coming down. Glenn, you're going to be followed by Kirsten Pickworth, 49A.
Hi, council members. I'm Glenn Bullman. Thank you for listening to all of us. I live in Green Lake. I've lived in the area for 17 years, but moved to Seattle three years ago. And the only reason I was able to find a home for myself and my two kids that I could afford was because in the neighborhood I live in, they allowed things other than multifamily homes to be built 20 years ago. They maybe weren't affordable 20 years ago, but they are now. I am within the walk shed of the Roosevelt Station, but I am also surrounded by huge swaths of single-family home zone. We can't allow this. We're spending tens of billions on light rail. We can't preserve single-family homes around these stations in Amber and only allow them to be replaced with a bigger, more expensive, single-family home. We need to upzone all of Seattle to allow rowhouses and low-rise apartment buildings everywhere, and even higher zoning within one-mile radius of each light rail station and half a mile of any high-frequency transit stop. I also agree with many other speakers who said that affordable housing must be onsite. We can't allow the rich, white, litigious, single-family homeowners of Queen Anne to scare developers out of building affordable housing onsite. If the city allows this, this is just redlining by another name. We need to require onsite affordable housing and increase the amount of the city where this type of development can occur. Once again, thank you, and move fast on this. And then, as others have said, look for more ways that you can build more affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirsten Pickworth? Kirsten, are you still here? Anastasia Spangler? Anastasia, are you here? Anastasia? Oh, Anastasia. Anastasia, you're going to be followed by, it looks like Mary Mitchell. I'm sorry if I got that one incorrect. And then David Merring?
Hello, council. I can't believe they actually make you sit here and listen to everybody. I was surprised they still let me sign up. One second, while I bring up what I want to talk about. So first off, as I understand it, the way out you offer developers is incredibly short-sighted. There is a much greater value in an absolute affordable unit contribution requirement, sharing the burden between business and government than any fund you could create. I mean, any developer would rather contribute a few thousand dollars, because if they have hope in their investment, that's what they're going to do. Two, I think you should make it a lot easier to build. The taxes and regulations you have on every person and business in this area, it doesn't encourage progress for anybody. I mean, first off, before you take money, before you take the money from people and businesses, you should make sure that you're stretching every dollar to its limit. Also, I'd just like to say, don't discount microapartments. I think this is a prime example of where private companies provide solutions where government has failed. Your affordable programs don't serve the one-in-three foster youth, hey, that's me, who become homeless within a year of exiting the system. Your programs, affordable housing programs, have so many limiting qualifications. They don't accept cosigners, one like that. I even called Bellwether Housing one time, and they didn't even, they didn't even tell me their own requirements. So, you know, how do you expect anybody to navigate a system like that? So don't call us transients. A low deposit, a locking door, and even in a hundred and eighty square feet means I'm not on the street, I can get my degree. That's good enough for me. Also, do you have a design board in the city? Because if so, I think they came in from another reality. A reality where hideous, flat cubes pass for acceptable design? Seriously? What the heck? I have to look at that every day on my way to school. I wouldn't want to invite these unchecked developers into my neighborhood either. We should have compassion across the spectrum for all of our neighbors.
Thank you, Anastasia. Mary, you're going to be followed by David Merring, and then Cameron Hall.
Hi, my name is Mary Mattel. I live in Capitol Hill, right across from Mini Middle School, in kind of an anomaly, a nine-hundred-square-foot, single-family home. I live there with my husband and my two kids. And our home is charming, we bought it at the bottom of the market, which is the only way we got in the neighborhood. But we know it's not the future of Seattle, right? It's the past. And so the question is, what is going to replace our home whenever we get around to moving or living somewhere else? There used to be another nine-hundred-square-foot house next door, and it was sold and torn down, and in its place is a three-thousand-square-foot, two-million-dollar, single-family home. And the millionaires who live next door are very nice, but given the housing crisis, that feels unethical. So for me, the, this is about what's going to replace my home when I leave. And I think seven-thousand-dollar, seven-hundred-thousand-dollar townhomes are better than a two-million-dollar single-family home, but they're not enough. So I totally support this, but I want to see it be bolder and more ethical. It feels like a moral document about what our community should look like, and I, and so I am in favor of it, and I also just want to see you guys do even more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. David Merring? David, you're going to be followed by Cameron Hall.
Thank you. Seattle's, one of Seattle's top priorities is climate change, and hopefully we can have a MHA program support resist to climate change in Seattle. Again, my name is David Merring. I live in East Magnolia, and I live in a low-rise, multifamily home with no trees on the six-thousand-square-foot parent lot. I have pavement between all the buildings, and there's no trees on the right-of-way. We must save our last six-thousand-three-hundred trees, and those diagrams that I've left with you are from the Seattle Trees for Seattle. We must save our last three-thousand-two-hundred tree groves. The Seattle Urban Forestry Commission has asked that no net tree loss be pursued in this last week in meeting with you. We can have both density and open space to preserve trees. What I'm seeing right now in the MHA is increased forest ratios and increased number of dwellings with no consideration for space carved out for trees and green open space. That's the oversight for the MHA, and there's no need to have every square foot of our lots covered by buildings when we, when I want, when we need to have both buildings and open space. Our priority should be the environment. Trees for Seattle shows where there are no trees, there are urban heat islands right here in Seattle. You can see it right on those diagrams. The balance means looking at other urban plans, such as the example there I showed from China, where they have, the more the density they have, the more green space we have. The current zoning that we are proposing and making more dense does not consider open space and trees. Therefore, I have to support the Seattle Coalition for Affordability, Livability, and Equity, so that we make sure we get affordable housing with open space and trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Cameron Hall? Cameron, are you still here? How about Andrew Tsang? Andrew Tsang? Okay. Andrew, you're the last person who signed up. If there's anybody left who hasn't had a chance to, please come down and follow Andrew. I apologize that I might have missed you. Andrew, please proceed.
Good evening, council members. My name is Andrew Tsang, and, you know, I'm coming to you tonight to discuss some affordable housing. And I, you know, I think that, you know, I would like to first off, support this legislation. I think that it's extremely important work that you guys are doing, it's going to make our city a better place. And I'd like to share a personal anecdote, you know, when I went to, I actually took some classes here. I was, I was a student at the, at the School of Seattle Central, right? And, you know, one of the things I heard very often was that, you know, the cost of living here in District Three and, you know, commuting in every single day, it's just absolutely immense, right? So, you know, I can understand that there's a strong desire here for affordable housing, which is why I like to support this legislation, and I think that it simply does not go far enough. The fact is, of the matter, is that a lot of people want to live in this region. It is one of the most expensive neighborhoods in the city of Seattle for that reason, and I think that I would like to support, you know, the, an increase in the upzone, so we can have a greater percentage of a greater number of affordable units being constructed in District Three. I think that I would first off, love to see additional housing be built along Broadway. And I think that, you know, this is such a wide street, it provides us an incredible opportunity to derive value out of this program, and I hope to see additional housing be built in the sector. Furthermore, I wish to see additional housing be built east of Broadway. I think that, you know, the current zoning is simply insufficient for, for the opportunities that this, this, the sector of our city provides, and given the incredible educational, vocational, and transportation options that this district simply possesses. So I just hope that you guys can continue to expand this program, and thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Andrew. I'm, I'm sorry that I missed your name. Please feel free to come forward. Yes, please.
You didn't do anything wrong, I signed up like forty-five seconds ago. My name is Caitlin Taylor, and I am here in support of more affordable housing and MHA. I think I, like anybody else here, recognize that it's not perfect. We also don't operate in a perfect world politically or economically, and I think it is incredibly important that we act pragmatically in addressing the emergency that is housing affordability in our city. And there are a number of reasons. Access is a huge one, and it's something that people have spoken to a lot. I know for me, it's really important to be able to live affordably in a dense space in order for me to maintain my emotional relationships with people who support me through my life. I need to live in a place that's well-connected by public transit. My partner lives in a different country, my family lives across the United States. I'm here because of opportunities and because I love this city, but in order for me to live a healthy life, I need to be able to be near opportunity, near jobs, near people, and really vibrant public transit, which only happens when you have high density, which is why I support really vigorous upzoning in the places where, where it's appropriate, with a great, strong public process to make it happen. I'm also really concerned about climate change. I think, I hope there's not a single person in this room who isn't concerned about that. And we know that one of the number-one ways to address climate change and mitigate its impacts is by making our cities affordable, so we can prevent sprawl, reduce emissions, and have an overall efficient infrastructure. So please build more housing, keep up the work that you're doing. I'm hugely in support, and like all of my friends are too, so that's at least like thirty people, I promise. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. That concludes tonight's public hearing. I want to say thank you to my colleagues who stuck around for the full three and a half hours. I'm very grateful to you both for being here. We will be back in the chambers of City Hall on Monday, May seventh, to discuss the issues that we heard tonight and at the open house on Districts Three and Seven, get an overview of the proposed zoning changes in District Two, and then-